Test, 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 test. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we could take our seats, please. Don't make me bang the gavel. Good evening. It's wonderful to see so many people warming these chairs this evening. A really nice change of pace. I would like to call to order the Wednesday, June 12th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting. I will ask trustee Schnicker, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... on the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. We are going to kick off this evening's work session with one of my most favorite evenings of the year. It is our tenure recipient night. I will now turn things over to our superintendent, Ms. Fox Alter, and she will get us started.
All right, good evening, everyone. And particularly, we want to welcome our tenure recipients and their families this evening. Receiving a tenure is an incredible milestone in an educator or in an administrator's career. It's recognition after a number of years of multiple data-informed decisions, observations, conversations, drop-in observations, and taking a look at the metrics put forth based on different models through which we evaluate performance. So first of all, I just want to extend our heartfelt congratulations for all of you who are ready to receive it this evening. To the Osning community, they need to be well informed that the Board of Education takes their role in the granting of tenure very seriously. We hold multiple meetings and special meetings, particularly in their last year, where every candidate who's up for tenure is reviewed and discussed with thoroughness. So congratulations to everybody who have reached the finish line on the journey towards tenure this evening. So we have multiple people speaking on behalf of different individuals. So first up, I'm going to invite Maria Meyer to speak on behalf of Chris Demadiya.
Good evening, President Crossling, esteemed members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Fox Alter, colleagues, and Osning learning community. It is my distinct honor to stand here tonight to celebrate a significant milestone in the career of our esteemed colleague, our Director of STEM, Chris Demadiya. Stand right here, sir. For the past two years, I have had the privilege of working closely with Chris. During this time, I have witnessed firsthand his unwavering dedication, innovative approach, and collaborative spirit he brings to our learning community. Chris embodies the very essence of what it means to be a team player and drive collective success as part of our leadership team. Chris's approach to decision-making is firmly anchored in what is best for our children. He consistently prioritizes their needs, aspirations, and futures. His vision is very clear: to build a comprehensive pre-K-12 pathway that nurtures and cultivates our next generation of scientists, engineers, and mathematicians. In order to accomplish this, he leads our district-wide pre-K-12 Math Council, where he fosters a collaborative environment where our math educators work together to ensure a seamless, vertically-aligned curriculum grounded to data and aligned to learning standards. Through this council, we are working on creating and expanding access to high-level courses, making advanced mathematical learning opportunities available for all our students. Chris's vision transcends conventional educational boundaries, aiming to transform the teaching and learning of mathematics and science. He is deeply invested in infusing 21st century skills such as inquiry and collaboration into the educational landscape. Our school district spearheads the New York State Smart Start Grant, with Chris at the helm propelling a pioneering initiative across nine districts. This grant harnesses the power of computer science, engineering, and educational technology, creating a distinctive program. By empowering our K-8 educators in professional learning opportunities and collaborating with Mercy, this initiative ensures widespread access to high-quality STEM education. Chris's stewardship within this consortium highlights his dedication not only to our students, but also to the professional learning of our educators. Under Chris's leadership, our STEM program has flourished, igniting curiosity and passion in our students. He has introduced innovative teaching methods and cutting-edge technologies that have transformed our classrooms and elevated learning experience. Drones, drone school and drone soccer coming up the path is just one of those experiences. Chris's focus on hands-on experiential learning ensures that our students are not only absorbing knowledge, but are also applying it in very meaningful ways. This is evidenced by our third graders' success in the New York State First in Math Competition. Chris, I can't see you. Move forward, move forward. I can't see you. Chris, your commitment to excellence has made a profound impact on our school community. You have set a new standard for what is possible in STEM education, and your work is paving the way for countless young minds to explore, discover, and achieve. Tonight, as we celebrate your well-deserved tenure, we also look forward to the many more achievements that lie ahead. We are incredibly fortunate to have you guiding our STEM initiatives, and we are excited about the future you are helping to shape for our students. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your unwavering commitment to our children's success, and congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, it gives me distinct pleasure to speak on behalf of the next two individuals who are up for tenure. A year ago this month, I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with this Board of Education and community members here and to accept a position to be interim superintendent of schools. The role requires, though, that you have a keen and committed executive cabinet, people that you can call on 24/7, all hours of the day or night, and you can count on for important guidance, background information, and to do shared planning with a level of confidence and confidentiality that supports the role of an executive cabinet member. There are two individuals tonight who we will be awarding tenure to who are integral parts of that team: Kim Mauricio and Jessica Turner. Kim, could you please join me at the podium? Thank you. First of all, you have to know, you probably know this within like a minute or two once you speak with Kim, that she's not from this area of the state. She is definitely a Buffalo girl, born and raised, and we are so fortunate that you are here in Osning. Kim started her career as a Special Education Elementary School in Buffalo. For those of you who don't know, the Buffalo City School District, it is the second-largest public school system in New York State, the second-largest. In 2010, recognizing Kim's incredible talents, the administration in the Buffalo City Schools decided her next path would be that of an administrator, because she could then impact more lives, more kids, more teachers. And she started her career at Community School 53 as an assistant principal. All right, hats off to every assistant principal, because if anyone knows the role of that job, you are master of everything, everything. Kim culminated her career in the Buffalo City School District as Director of Special Education, the second-largest public school system in New York State. That's a phenomenal appointment and achievement, Kim. A number of years ago, we were super fortunate that her husband, David, took a job in Westchester County. And I remember meeting David when he arrived and hearing about you and a young baby, and we were so excited to have David back. I mean, he's from the city anyway, so he came back home, but he brought Kim down with him. And I know Dr. Sanchez knew the talent that exists in a woman who had a job as Director of Special Education for the second-largest public school system in New York State. Kim, you have been a consummate and outstanding professional with a deep understanding of special education pedagogy and its practice. You have keen awareness of structures and systems for ensuring that the needs of students are met in an important and consequential way. You are at all times student-focused and focused on what is best for all kids, not just Joes who are identified as specially-abled in New York State. You are someone I lean on on a regular basis. Your guidance and your support and your words are absolutely outstanding. We are so fortunate to have you here in the Osning schools. David, thank you for taking a job in Westchester. I know Peace School is very happy, but we're thrilled because it brought Kim to us here in Osning. And on another note, by the way, we love hearing about your beautiful daughter, Iliana, and just the gift of family, because those of us who are educators, we're about kids and family. And we are so fortunate to have you here, Kim. So congratulations. So when this is over, I'm going to tell Kim and Jessica that they are dismissed from the board meeting and they are to go home with their families, all right? And I warned them all, because they were giving me pushback, then I'm going to say it publicly, and the board will also encourage them to do the same thing. My next tenure award recipient is Jessica Turner. Jessica, come on up to the podium. I am proud to share a little bit about Jessica Turner's background and professional experience. Jessica is 25 years' experience as an educator. And Jessica, like many, many of us, started her teaching career in New York City. Right out of college, she ended up teaching third grade in the largest public school district in the United States, by the way. But Jessica is like an upstate girl, so she thought that commute was a little much, and so she took a job a little closer to her home in Beacon, where as an elementary teacher, she got to teach in grades two, four, and five. So a wealth of experience doing that. Jessica was tapped to become an administrator, and as soon as she gained her certification, she started her career in Middletown, first as an elementary assistant principal, then at Middletown High School as a house principal. You could fit like probably three normal high schools into Middletown High School, because it's so huge and big. However, the Middletown District Office realized her talents as an instructional leader and then appointed her coordinator of all things like slows, APPR, instructional growth, leadership. I know there was a long title associated with that, because how do you capture that in a simple one? But you were a leader of leaders and in charge of all deans there. She then moved on to the Wapungir Central School District, where she was the Director of English Language Arts and Social Studies, the Director of Elementary Education K-12, and then became the DEI responsiveness officer for the Wapungir Central School District. That great background led her to us here in Osning. Since her arrival in 2021, Jessica has been an important and pivotable thought partner and initiation leader who approaches her work with professionalism and fidelity. Even when she calls me at 6:30 in the morning, she's got that very, very bright enthusiastic voice on the other end of her line, eager to talk about what's going on, what are we doing next, and the same tone and approach and enthusiasm can be also held late at night when we do talk. Jessica, I am so proud to be able to... A little fun fact, by the way, about Jessica, which she never shared, I had to look this up. In 2014, Jessica was announced as the Administrator of the Year for the Empire State Supervisors and Administrators Association. The great accolade, Jessica. So we love hearing about your two kids. Your daughter is here with us tonight, so we're thrilled to welcome you, and congratulations, Jessica, on earning tenure this evening. Okay, next up, we have Kim Mauricio, speaking on behalf of Holly Freehill.
Good evening, Board of Education, families, the community, and colleagues. Tonight, we come together to recognize and celebrate Holly Freehill's remarkable accomplishments as our dedicated elementary behaviorist. Holly's support for students, staff, and families has been instrumental in the success and well-being of our school community. Over the past years, Holly's work has impacted our students. She supports their needs and creates an environment where every child can experience success. Her expertise and compassionate approach have helped countless students overcome challenges, develop positive behaviors, and achieve their full potential. Holly's commitment extends beyond the students. She has been a vital resource for our staff, offering guidance and support to help them address behavioral issues effectively. Her collaborative efforts have strengthened our school's capacity to provide a nurturing learning environment. During COVID, Holly planned sessions for families and worked closely with parents and guardians, equipping them with strategies and tools to support their children during this difficult time. This partnership between school and family has created a consistent and supportive framework for our students' growth. We are fortunate to have her as part of the Osning School District. Please join me in expressing our gratitude and appreciation for all she does and continues to do. Thank you, Holly, for your outstanding contributions and making a lasting difference in the life of students.
Now Kim is speaking on behalf of Crystal Roth. Crystal?
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Crystal Roth, our esteemed teacher of the deaf and hard-of-hearing. Crystal is a caring and compassionate educator who consistently goes above and beyond for her students. Serving students across all six of our buildings district-wide, she has made a significant impact through her dedication and expertise. In addition to her direct work with students, Crystal has also provided professional development to fellow therapists, ensuring they have the knowledge and skills to support our students effectively. Her efforts to educate stakeholders and students alike have been invaluable in fostering an inclusive and understanding environment within our district. Crystal's unwavering commitment to her students and colleagues exemplifies the spirit of excellence in education. We are incredibly fortunate to have her on our team. Thank you, Crystal, for all that you do for our children, our staff, and our families. You are greatly appreciated.
Okay, so Nicole Nova is going to speak on behalf of Alexis Nichols.
Superintendent Fox Alter, members of the Board of Education, esteemed colleagues and members of the Osning community, it is an honor to be here this evening to recognize Alexis Nicholas as tonight's tenure, one of her tenure recipients from AMD. I have had the privilege of working with Alexis in her role as an ASL teacher in our building, world language coordinator, and co-conspirator in our anti-bias and anti-racist work. Our conversations about creating a more equitable and just AMD leave me impassioned, inspired, and steadfast in my commitment to our students and families.
I've had the privilege as the Director of Multilingual Learners to work with Alexis as well. She is the consummate professional. And in the words of her colleague, she's a skilled practitioner. She's constantly mindful of her students' academic and personal development and provides an exceptionally engaging learning environment to maximize student learning. And although we have a lot of enthusiasm for ASL, sometimes students are very, very intimidated. And she has the ability to connect with each student by addressing their unique talents and needs. Alexis's most outstanding quality is her ability to reflect on her practice, to constantly assess her own teaching and its impact on student learning. She has worked arduously to create a clear path between middle and high school learning as our students transition in their studies from ASL, from the middle school level to the high school level. And she is at all times very, very professional and just a joy to work with.
We... Oh, sorry. You get to say your words. We asked students to share things they love and appreciate about Ms. Nicholas. And as I read through their reflections, the following words leaped across the page: attention, joy, understanding. One student remarked, "My favorite thing about Ms. Nicholas is how she cares about her students and takes time with each student if they need her help or assistance." Another shared, "She has an amazing sense of humor, and overall, she's an amazing person." Alexis, thank you for your partnership and dedication. You are an amazing human, and our students and families are fortunate to call you a lifelong educator here in Osning.
Okay. Yes, yes, you come back. You could stay up. I'll call it up. Okay, why not? I was given a script by, you know, Nicole. Okay, so the next tenure award recipient is Jayden De Guzman, and Kate Matthews will speak on behalf. Kate? And Frazin will be joining us. Thank you.
So I am so happy to introduce Jayden De Guzman, who worked at Osning High School as a chorus and piano teacher before moving to Claremont School this year. There were big shoes to fill, and Jayden has filled those shoes beautifully. Jayden is a gifted vocalist who shares her love of music with her students. She develops strong relationships with her students and encourages them to excel in their musicianship, always creative. Jayden searches for new ways to engage her learners, and I just want to congratulate you on receiving tenure. I'm looking forward to working together as our cultural arts team to provide our students with the very best arts education. And I know Ms. Shamsi wants to say some words and specifically talk about the work that you've done this year at Claremont School, which we're so proud of. So congratulations.
If you can go back and remember to your time as a child in a school in your music class, I think you would remember that time with fondness. It is one of the most special places in a school building, because children just get to unplug, and they smile, and the joy in their voices comes out when they're in this space, and it's just beautiful to watch. And I'm so lucky that in this one year that I've known Jayden, she has maintained a commitment to fostering an inclusive and equitable learning environment for our students, a place where they feel valued, respected, and empowered to succeed. Jayden is one of our student equity leaders, so she runs a group in our school where she supports students in learning about the barriers to learning and empowers them to advocate for students across our school. In fact, I think it was this week that Jayden and her students met with our director, Jared Mann, from Buildings and Grounds, to empower our school to recycle and be sustainable. This year, I had the chance to...
I just have a little letter from them to the Board of Ed that I'll circulate around to the trustees while you're here.
Great, then it worked. See? Who knows to our students? This year, I had the chance to experience the first-ever Claremont musical, which we held right here in this space, where our students were inspired to discover this transformative power of music. I saw children that are normally so shy in class come out of their shell as they stood in front of, what do we say, 500 parents and friends while they just sang their hearts out. And this is due in support of Jayden's nurturing talents of our students and instilling a sense of pride and confidence and belonging. I have no doubt that Jayden will continue to advocate for our students and our community as well as nurture all of our students' talents. Please join me in congratulating Jayden De Guzman on this well-deserved honor.
Okay, I'm going to invite Maria Meyer back up to the podium to speak on behalf of William Garone. to speak on behalf of William Garone.
Good evening once again. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of William Garone. Bill is a dedicated educator who truly acts on the values that he holds dear: equity, empathy, and high expectations for his children. He ensures that all students are represented in his classroom and the curriculum, and the curriculum, and that all students learn perspectives in history. He engages his students in projects focused on equity, motivating them to critically think about the world that surrounds them and their role in it. In observing his interactions with students, Bill cares deeply about how his students are as human beings, asking them how they are doing and checking in on them. Additionally, Bill has been part of the teacher team leading the Human Rights Club and organizing guest speakers to visit Austining High School, including Holocaust and Japanese internment camp survivors. He has also created, in partnership with his students through the Student-Driven Curriculum Club, the Social Action Course, focused on meeting the culturally responsive needs and interests of the Austining High School student body. He is a talented and reflective educator who is a true asset to our learning community. Help me congratulate William Garone.
Okay. So Maria is going to, for those of you who may or may not be aware, tonight is prom night for the high school. So that is why there will be many a parent of a senior who might not sleep tonight, but also it is why the high school administrative team is not here. And Maria is doing the recognition as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. So Maria, the next honoree is Lillian Savastano. Savastano?
Right here next to me.
So good evening once again. Lillian Savastano, or as students call her, Ms. Sav, is engage, is an engaging and dedicated teacher who builds strong and positive relationships with her students. Ms. Sav has a hidden superpower in that she's able to connect with each one of her students, establishing deep relationships in which her students trust her and are willing to take risks in the area of mathematics, a subject in which many view themselves as maybe not so good in mathematics. But they, after her, their interaction with Ms. Sav, they see themselves as mathematicians. She creates lessons utilizing scenarios that hook and engage students and makes every effort to scaffold and differentiate learning in her classroom. Ms. Sav is also a teacher who believes that one never stops growing and learning professionally, taking continued professional development courses, particularly focused on students who are differently abled and English-language learners. She truly believes that all students can learn and perform and is committed to creating an environment in which students feel that way about themselves. Ms. Sav is an amazing educator and is a gift to our Austining learning community. Please help me in congratulating Ms. Sav. There's more. Thank you.
And next, we invite, you're doing Kenny, Kenny. We invite Maria to speak on behalf of Kenny Taveras. Kenny? Oh, thank you.
It's Mr. Duco's.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Mr. Duco's.
Kenny is a guidance counselor at the high school, so thank you. Thank you, Jeremy, for doing multiple duties today.
Sorry, yeah, a little nervous, but.
Okay.
Enlighten us of, Kenny, will you go to prom with me? No. All right. Families and friends, Superintendent Fox Alter, members of the Board, esteemed colleagues, and distinguished guests, tonight we gather to celebrate not only an incredible school counselor, but also a true beacon of inspiration and innovation at Austining High School. It is with immense pleasure that I stand before you to extend heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Kenny Taveras on this momentous occasion as we present him with tenure. Kenny has exemplified excellence in his role as a school counselor at Austining High School, consistently going above and beyond to enrich the lives of our students and foster a sense of belonging within our school community. One of Mr. Taveras's contributions, and one of my favorites, and he knows this, is the School Counseling Ambassador Program. Alongside his colleague, Laura Montoya Uribe, this initiative ensures that every student who walks through the doors of the School Counseling Department is not only welcome, but also supported by their peers. Through this program, Mr. Taveras has demonstrated his unwavering dedication to the well-being and success of our students. Unbeknownst to our department, this program has been a pivotal point of access, acceptance, and care for our students coming from all over the world. Thank you, Kenny. But that's not all Kenny create. Kenny's creativity and passion shine through in every aspect of his work, including the introduction of Music Fridays. This innovative tradition has become a beloved fixture in our department and beyond. By providing a space for students to unwind, connect, and just enjoy music, Kenny has truly created a vibrant atmosphere that resonates with all in our halls and in our department. As the students would say, "Mr. Taveras, this is a vibe." Furthermore, Kenny's commitment to empowering our students extends beyond the classroom. As the advisor for our Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, also known as PRI-LI, he has played a pivotal role in shaping the next generation of leaders. His dedication was evident when he led a group of students to Albany, New York, where they had the opportunity to engage with other chapters, learn about the program, and even defend a bill on the New York State Senate Chamber floor. Through his mentorship, Kenny is helping to cultivate a brighter future for our community and beyond. And I must say, this was a program that had gone dormant for multiple years, and Kenny picked it up in September and without a doubt took a handful of students overnight trip and gave them the experience of their lifetime. He'll show you the Bachata film. It's great. His positive attitude and wavering enthusiasm and genuine compassion make him a joy to work with each and every day. His impact extends far beyond the walls of the School Counseling Department, touching the lives of all who have the privilege of getting to know him. Tonight, as we celebrate Kenny and his well-deserved tenure, let us not only reflect on his remarkable achievements, but also express our gratitude for his continued dedication and service to our school and our community. On behalf of Principal Langley, Administration, the Austining Union Free School District, members of the Board, and the entire Austining community, I extend my heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation. Congratulations, my brother. May your journey ahead be filled with continued success, fulfillment, and endless opportunities to make a difference at Austining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. All right. And last but not least, I invite Nicole Nova back to the podium. She's going to speak on behalf of James Langelotti.
Hello again. It is an honor to be here this evening to recognize James Langelotti for his tenure recipient. I can't even speak anymore. I'm very tired. But on your tenure recognition. James is an exceptional educator and friend. I have had the honor and privilege of working with James at both Roosevelt and AMD. Over the course of the past three years, I have watched him grow as a teacher and a leader. From working with his co-teacher, who's in the background buttons, to facilitate a steam carnival, to making the transition to middle school, James faces every challenge inside and outside of the classroom with the singular focus, what is best for students? A year ago, I had to make a challenging decision to transfer two staff members from Roosevelt, one to Claremont and one to AMD. James's capacity to differentiate instruction, his collaboration with colleagues, and detailed and thorough communication with families made him the right choice for our middle-level learners. Here are some of the things his students have to say about him. My favorite thing about Mr. L is that he notices things, like when you have a bad day, and he makes you want to go to class because he's so fun. My personal favorite is, though math ain't my thing, he made it lots funner to try and finish the work. Anyways, he's in my top five fave adult/teachers in life right now. I'd say he's in my top five, too. In the words of his colleagues, "He is thoughtful, intentional, and genuinely a kind and caring person whose whole heart is in education." One colleague captured this story. In math, during a lesson in area, James literally went home one weekend and picked up every box he could find and brought them in. His class looked like Christmas morning. All this just to give his students the ability to understand the concepts of measuring sides of three-dimensional shapes. And guess what? They got it. James, you are an amazing human, an amazing educator, and an amazing friend. And our students and families are so fortunate to call you a lifelong educator here in Austining. Congratulations.
All right. We have to pass two resolutions in order to make all of this official. And once we do that, I am going to invite all of our tenure recipients up to the photo setup behind me. We can take pictures and celebrate a little bit more before we get into the rest of our meeting this evening. So I will take a motion for 7.1 and 7.2.
Seven.
Second. 7.1, Resolution Regarding Administrative Staff Tenure Appointments. 7.2, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Tenure Appointments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate all of our tenure recipients this evening. We are looking forward to working with you for many, many, many years to come. All right, let's take some pictures. Come on.
I just gave an email about you coming on Friday. Oh, these are my people. You're my favorite.
Awesome. Well, have fun.
No, but you're my favorite.
It's a good time. I love his sarcasm. We're gonna get along great.
No, I, I, I.
He was probably serious.
No, he's a good boy.
Sigma Alpha?
Yeah, I'm a Sigma.
He's a Sigma. I know.
All right, I don't want to rain on anyone's happy occasion. Unfortunately, we have another happy presentation, but that sort of rhymes. We have Austining Matters next that are gonna come up and talk to us about their grants and all the good work that they are doing. I'm gonna bid farewell to Kim and Jessica. Have a wonderful evening celebrating with your families. It was nice to meet your families. Have a wonderful night. Just before you go, just a little teaser. Austining Matters is here for a few minutes to talk to us about the wonderful work that they are doing, and then we will get into our comprehensive facilities proposal and plan. Ready? Come on up. I know. We'll take a picture with you guys as well.
Wait, don't leave. We're giving money away. Don't you want to stay? All right. Well, have a good night. Good evening, everybody, members of the board, superintendent, box alter, teachers, administrators, parents, students, and guests. I am Gina Sartorio. I'm the president of Austining Matters Education Foundation, and I am a mom eagerly awaiting my child's start at AMD Middle School this fall. Before we share the approved grants for the upcoming school year, I want to stress the urgent need for volunteers on boards like ours. Without dedicated individuals carving out time in their busy schedules, as you all know, our organization simply cannot continue its vital work and will be in jeopardy at some point of ending its mission. If you're passionate about education and community, have time to step into a role that is neither time-consuming nor overwhelming, but rather rewarding and fun, please consider joining us. Together, we make a real difference for our students and our community, which will be reflected in the grants that we will, we award this evening. Despite starting the past year with a very small crew, OM reintroduced, OM is Austining Matters, introduced the 5K two-mile run-walk last September, and we raised, with support of our sponsors and community, over $20,000, which allowed us, thank you, which allowed us to double our funds this year over last year. This coming September, this coming September 7th, we will hold our 20th Annual Run-Walk Fundraiser. If anyone is interested in volunteering or sponsoring, which brings in the majority of our grant money, please visit our website, which is awestingmatters.org, or speak to me or our vice president and events chair, Caroline Turner, at some point this evening. This particular fundraiser is the reason we are able to award 10 grants this year across five of our schools. It yields, it yields the majority of our grant money, so I truly hope you'll consider supporting this event and our organization in one way or another. Now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Raymond, the chair of our Grants Committee, but before I do, I want to acknowledge how fearless I think she is. She joined this board this year and has stepped into her role, which has changed a few times, with enthusiasm and dedication. Her tireless efforts have been instrumental in ensuring that the grant application process ran smoothly and that we were able to allocate funds where they are most needed. Rebecca, thank you for your outstanding commitment to our cause. And as we move forward with tonight's proceedings, I encourage everyone to reflect on the impact that our collective efforts can have on the lives of our students. Each grant awarded represents the opportunity to enrich their educational experience and support their growth and development. Without further ado, I hand over to Rebecca to announce the recipients of this year's grants.
Thank you, Gina. I joined this very small crew just a few months ago, and I'm very proud to be a part of Austining Matters. Reviewing the submissions and helping these teachers supplement the educational opportunities of the Austining students has been a very energizing experience. And before I announce the awards, I want to reiterate something that we say in our application. We encourage every teacher to apply. Our goal is to provide enriching educational opportunities to as many kids as possible. We have limited funds, so we look for opportunities that will have the biggest impact on the largest number of students. We're looking for out-of-the-box ideas, opportunities that our children would not normally have, and we hope to cover every school in the district. This year, we didn't receive any applications from Roosevelt or AMD. However, we did find a way to include AMD, and that leads me to our first grant recipient, Ms. Narzepor, the library media specialist at the high school. Her application was for an author talk with Kwame Alexander, a New York Times bestselling author and dynamic motivational speaker. We loved this proposal so much that we've arranged with Dr. Novar to sponsor talks at AMD as well as the high school. We're funding 100% of the grant request with room to increase should the collaboration between the two schools require it. The total amount requested was $600. Our second is Brookside's Inclusive School Committee, spearheaded by Ms. Boland, and she requested $1,000 to purchase supplies to fill a sensory table that the entire school will use during recess, and we are funding 100% of that requested amount. At Park School, we are continuing our funding of Ms. Ringel's Story Walkway with a partial contribution of $1,561 towards its ongoing operation and the additional, I'm sorry, and the addition of several new stories. Claremont teachers Mr. Mace and Ms. Rehose submitted a grant called Science Models for Energy. The grant will fund purchasing 20 Newtons cradles and 20 Sterling engines to help fourth graders understand energy through hands-on learning. This equipment will be used by every fourth grader every year going forth, and we are funding 100% of the requested amount for a total of $1,320. Similarly, a grant proposal was submitted by Mr. Seichiniano for a seismograph for the high school. Earth science students will use this piece of equipment to study earthquakes and plate tectonics, and we are funding 100% of the requested amount for a total of $658. The next initiative we are funding is the Hudson River Slope Clearwater Sailing Classroom, submitted by Ms. Nastasi. We will be awarding 100% of the grant requested for a total of $1,095. And this program will support two classes of high school students, one program running in the fall and one, another one in the spring. The students will learn about the history and modern significance of the Hudson River Valley in a class conducted by Hudson River Slope Clearwater on a sailboat on the Hudson River at the Austining waterfront. We will be granting Ms. Pavich's Business Club $2,500, approximately 50% of the total grant amount requested, to assist the purchase of materials so they can fundraise, prepare tax returns for the community, and participate in business club competitions. Austining Matters will be funding several art department initiatives at the high school next year, including $409 towards the purchase of a linea cut press for Ms. Bouchelle's class, and $500 towards the purchase of fabric for Ms. Ingenieri's fashion class. The funding for this grant comes directly from the Jacobson-Murphy Family Fund. Austining Matters thanks the Jacobson-Murphy family for their contribution. And our final grand award goes to Mr. Whitehead and his request for six Canon EOS Rebel DSLR cameras for his award-winning film classes. This is Mr. Whitehead's second awarded grant. In 2022, sorry, yeah, 2022, '23, his students participated in a veteran-student writing exchange that produced a powerful documentary, which we encourage everyone to watch. It can be found on YouTube. We will be funding 100% of the requested amount for a total of $4,870.37. Austining Matters is excited to see what Mr. Whitehead's students will create with these new cameras. In total, we are awarding $14,513.37 in grants for the 2024-2025 school year. We at Austining Matters love supporting the continued education of our children through these efforts. We thank Austining and its surrounding communities for their sponsorship and donations toward our fundraising activities every year. And again, if you are interested in volunteering with Austining Matters or sponsoring any of our fundraising efforts, we gladly welcome your support. Thank you.
I have to say, I had the wonderful opportunity this week of joining in a story walk at Park School. It was wonderful. It was a fabulous grant, and to see all that engagement from our young pre-K students and to engage with a piece of literature, a story, in a way with all senses and movement and just excitement, it was just beautiful. I, I think I'm going to participate in every story walk that's there, and I think everyone should. It was a wonderful grant. Loved it, loved it. So thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
I have seen all the hard work that your organization has been doing. I see the effort to be doing inventive and inclusive new fundraising activities like karaoke. Seems like the kids absolutely loved it. So I just want you to know that we do see you, we do appreciate you. It's a tremendous amount of volunteer work, and, you know, if the community is watching, we do have a lot of folks watching virtually, please do reach out to the organization to pitch in. I know you guys are looking for people to join you, so this is my pitch. If you're listening and you're watching and you want to make a difference, this is definitely a way to do that. Thank you for the awards that you have provided. I look forward to seeing how they shake out next year. And would you join us for a photo at the photo booth?
That's okay. I think our tenure was the update.
Okay. All right, well, I will mark that off then. All right, before we continue on with our facilities update, I just want to take a motion for 4.2. 4.2, Resolution Regarding the Hilda Bonavist Distinguished Service Award. Any discussion?
Oh, Dr. Mara?
This is Mike Con. Check, check. In my mic. Check, check. There we go. I have, because Mrs. Langley's at the prom tonight, as Mary mentioned, I wanted to speak on Lisa Wheeler's behalf just for a moment, even though she was not able to attend. The Hilda Bonavist Award, I was curious about this award because it's part of the CSEA contract in the bargaining unit, and it's, first thing I did was I Googled Hilda Bonavist. I was curious, right? You have to know your history. So Hilda Bonavist was a lifelong Austining resident who passed away at 93 years old in 2007. She was best known for her 32 years of distinguished service to the Austining School District. She was a member of many clubs within the community. She was a graduate of Austining High School, member of the Historical Society. And this award was, first award was given in 1984 on her behalf, so this award is quite unique to Austining and really values dedication. So Lisa Wheeler, I'll actually read a little bit from Mrs. Langley's letter to the central office for, on Lisa's behalf. "It is with great pleasure that I recommend Lisa Wheeler for the Hilda Bonavist Award. As a senior office assistant at our school for the past 35 years, she has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, attention to detail, and an in-depth knowledge that has greatly benefited our school community. As we prepare to bid farewell to Ms. Wheeler, as with a mixture of gratitude and sadness, her departure will undoubtedly leave a void that would be very difficult to fill. Her 35 years, again, 35 years of service have provided her with an unparalleled depth of institutional knowledge, and her absence will be felt by all who have had the privilege of working with her. So just wanted to give Lisa that, that moment for those incredible amount of time and dedication to our community and our district. So thank you."
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay. Take it away. We're going now back to 2.4, our facilities update.
All right, good evening, everyone. I want to tee up tonight's meeting where we are going to review our updated facilities improvement plan, and the Board of Education has some important decisions to make this evening. So I thought it'd be appropriate at this moment, really, just to speak a little bit about the overall plan and our why, and just give everyone a brief review of the history behind all the work that has happened that leads us here tonight, June 12, 2024. So this capital improvement plan is most certainly focused and future-ready, and it started by the creation of a framework back in 2020. And with all great decision-making, you start with essential questions, key questions, that when you listen to them tonight, and they're so important because it permeates all the work that we do, and you will see it in the presentation later on. What 21st century instructional needs are not being addressed sufficiently in our schools? What compromises are being made that no longer should be made and are in danger of no longer working? Are school-building limitations driving the instructional program, or are students' educational needs? And last, what is the financial plan to leverage and maximize significant New York State Building Aid and capital reserves to minimize the impact to local taxpayers? That's a significant framework. There were deep conclusions based on those questions for discussions that led the work under Dr. Sanchez, the Facilities Committee, and this Board of Education. We have major and significant space constraints. It impacts almost every conversation I have when we're talking about planning for future needs next year. We have significant misalignment between needs and dedicated spaces. We have significant and dire shortage of support spaces, needs, related services, school counseling. We have sessions in hallways, under stairwells, on top of stages, in shared classrooms with multiple dividers in them. And we have compromised and substandard common spaces. The cafeteria at OHS can barely house 300 kids. The cafeterias at Brookside and Claremont are so small, the servery so constrained, that kids spend a significant amount of time standing online waiting for food. And many of the kitchen equipments happen to be inside the cafeteria itself. We want our kids to eat in a warm and welcome way and have time to go outside and recreate. We need space. Space challenges and space demands permeate the pre-K 12 conversations and decisions. It permeated our two-day-long conversation over the development of sections and how to create them. It dominates the conversation in the scheduling office at the high school, and it dominates the conversation here at AMD. We have compromised spaces, cramped classrooms, shared classrooms, multiple shared classrooms. Instructional time and opportunities are lost due to space challenges. A student who might want to stay after class just for a moment or two to do a signal check or a check-in with a teacher can't because that teacher and that student have to navigate hallways and crowded hallways to get to another classroom because the majority of teachers share classrooms with others. We have learning environments in hallways, landing areas, and stages, very dense hallways and stairwells, room utilization rates that significantly impede the... Room utilization rates that significantly impede the ability to schedule program around student needs. I met two weeks ago with a new Osning resident who's actually an architect to understand school construction. So, I welcomed the opportunity to have a chat, and he knew exactly what the room utilization rate should be. 80% or slightly below. This person was very surprised when I said 100%, and three periods a day, 107%. Every single room here at AMD is also utilized. You have outdated and dramatically undersized cafeterias kitchens, and that impacts lunch and recess. And space needs generate student safety concerns. Anxiety and stress levels impacts for students. In the survey and the information we asked from teachers in the fall, that comment repeated over and over and over again. This capital improvement plan is a transformative plan to renovate and expand the school facilities to meet the 21st century needs of our students and staff. It has a vision to build and improve facilities to support the growth and success of everyone, our teachers, our staff, and our students within our educational community. The initial plan was presented last spring at one of my first meetings here. After much development and thought, and during the 23-24 school year, we did a great deal of engagement and refinement of the plan based on the direction and oversight of this terrific Board of Education. At one of our recent updates during budget time, the board gave us a charge. Go back and take a look at it again, so that the tax impact is zero, but yet the program needs stayed front and center in our work. We had multiple meetings of our Facilities Committee, met extensively onsite and virtually with our consultants, and we presented that overview to this board last week. In terms of the work this year, I want to just take a moment to remind folks. We had multiple board meetings and updates. We created a new section on the website. The District Facilities Committee met seven times this year. We had school-based faculty meetings and evening events, explore and learn events, PTA conversations. We did a community survey in the fall where we had a robust response. We received detailed feedback from staff, AMD, and OHS. And based upon that survey, and again, I want to thank the Board of Education for their insight in that, we got information that was critical to the budget development and a change in that plan for this year. We brought in a traffic study, which allowed us to be able to create our egress and emergency exit, create a smart light feature for the traffic light at the bottom here of Van Cortlandt and AMD, and it moved some capital projects that were slated for the bond into this year's budget. That only happens with the oversight of this Board of Education. Tonight, on our work session on facilities, we're going to review the plan again with our consultants. And the board has some important decisions to make. We need formal SECA approval as the school district as a lead agency. I'm looking to the board to decide whether it's July 24th, because that's your tentative, the board has not approved that calendar yet, but there is a tentative date for July 24th in the evening, or if the board wants to hold another meeting on July 25th, which is the date of our retreat. We need a decision based on the option presented last week, on whether, what to do about the AMD outdoor recreation area, and whether or not to include an alternative contingent option for September 24th. I have been in touch with our communications consultant. We are developing a communications plan. Almost all the pieces are together. Tonight, we need direction as to what I'm going to be communicating, and so I will turn it to the board for that. So, I'm excited about tonight's conversation. It's the culmination of a lot of hard work. I want to thank, in particular, Ali DeZuber. We talk facilities. We look at facilities. We look at numbers on a constant and regular basis. I want to thank our consultants who are here this evening again for the proactive approach and regular and consistent meetings. And I want to give a huge shout-out to Jared for his distinguished leadership of our facilities and his knowledge base. What he brings to the table is invaluable. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to the team.
Good evening. Great to see everybody again. Again, another meeting where I have to outdo the previous presentations. Eventually, you know, I'll be the star of the show. So, I know we just looked at this last week, but I want to go through it again, especially for those that might be watching at home. We'll review the scope. Again, this is the scope for the 0% tax impact to the tax levy. Nothing's changed, but as I go through it this evening, I'll point out the areas again, so we don't have to go back where we made changes previously, so that it's consistent.
I like the highlights that you had.
Yeah. So, you'll see in this presentation, thank you for the reminder, we just, in the red boxes that you see, there are basically a brief explanation of the scope that we're looking at for the project. So, you can see here, there we go. So, left-hand side, we have the student commons. Again, basically, this is a story and a half student commons. This is what was the main reduction in scope, from the three-story to a story to a story and a half, in that both the commons and as well as the courtyard, I have an enlarged plan that I can show you in a second. We have the renovation and addition, new addition to the music area. So, this is basically a new portion of music classrooms out here. And then, of course, the existing spaces are renovated. The locker rooms will be a full gut reno. That will also include scope to support, structural support for the second and third floors above that, which we'll cover here in a second. And then, of course, we have the church, which is being renovated to meet current code per SED and New York State. That will have a coral space, office spaces, as well as a theater space. There's a second story that we'll cover in a second. And then, the steam addition, which is three stories. As part of that, just wanted to highlight, we're removing per shippo guidelines, the rectory that exists there onsite currently. The only other scope change here that we talked about last week was just some minor changes to the facade and the circulation space here to streamline the design. The design is basically the same, but we were able to work with Paul and his team, as well as our team internally, to just basically streamline things to make construction easier and more simplified. Moving on to the second floor, we have the fitness center that's directly over the locker rooms below, the second floor of the steam addition, and then the second floor of the church, which would include the balcony seating to look down in the theater space. And then, on the third floor, rounding out the floor plans, three additional science classrooms, and then the third floor of the steam addition. Zooming in, we can see here the courtyard space that would now be covered. That would have the capacity for 117 students. The student commons that we discussed last week as well, with 154 students. And then, outside, we have this covered patio that during, you know, clement weather, students would be able to go out there. That would sit approximately 91 students. And that is adjacent to the proposed music renovation and addition. Yes?
Chris, on the student commons, I know there was a, it's probably coming up the next one, there seemed to be limited lighting, that ambient lighting that's coming in. And I know that we've probably talked about this a little bit. Is there a possibility to kind of allow in more ambient lighting, so that particularly as it's daylight, because I know that that's like an east-west facing student commons?
Right.
And to the extent that, you know, there's limitations in terms of what we're able to do, because we're taking away that glass atrium, what can be done there?
Sure.
To essentially make that much more of a vibe of very open space, even though the ceiling was lowered significantly?
Sure. Yeah. The short answer is yes, we can. The images that we'll get to in a second are conceptual. So, they haven't been fully programmed out where we're looking through everything, which we get into much, much more detail later on. We look at structure, size of glass, openings, HVAC systems, et cetera. So, that all comes into play later on as we get into design. But yes, we definitely want to maximize natural light. I don't know if you recall, probably about a year ago, we did a presentation on how that impacts student learning, and natural light is a major portion of that. So, that's something we focus on in any new space that we're designing, for sure.
Yeah, particularly because that could become both serveries space and lunch space or breakfast space?
Sure.
As well as potential study space.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah. So, right here, to your point, we do have, you know, again, conceptually, skylights in here, some clear story glass. A lot of the glass, or the wall facing Route 9 is all currently glass. There would be light coming in at these level changes. But, and then you also have potential for additional skylights that would be in there. And to your point, this isn't just seating for lunch or breakfast. This does convert into study space, right? So, we have what we'd call a study stair here, or a gathering stair that could be used for impromptu class or some other sort of event. And then, the same thing, again, conceptual. This is looking at, you know, just to try to give you an idea of volume, very conceptual at this point, but what the courtyard would be. Again, adding in skylights, keeping with the same nomenclature and architecture that we had out in the patio space. Yes?
Is that opaque glass, or is that translucent glass?
That, we haven't determined yet. That's way down the road. When we get into specifications, it would probably be something that's opaque, right? We don't want harsh sunlight coming in there. We want natural light. Then, looking at the floor plans, zoomed in here for the church space, as well as the STEM addition. We have the theater space over here on the bottom right, vocal classrooms. And then, the support spaces are connecting lobby space that would have a stair in it that gets us up to the second floor bridge that gets the students back into the high school. And then, we have the program spaces for the STEM. That pattern follows up, basically, for the second and third floor. Only a second floor on the church space, which has the balcony seating for about 150. And then, we have rounding out this design, the lab spaces, robotics, engineering, et cetera, on the second and third floors for the steam. Looking at a section, just to give you an idea of volume and connection, we have the theater space. That's the predominant program space here in the church with the ancillary spaces that I just mentioned before, including vocal, the balcony, and then office and other support spaces. And then, you can see the three stories of STEM program over here on the right. Connection back to the high school would occur right here, adjacent to the backside of the gym is where the connector would be.
Chris, just for the community and for us as well, can you please point to where the current rectory is relative to where the steam lab and the robotics are?
Sure. It's approximately in here. Any questions on the high school before we move 7-8? Okay, great. So, 7-8, really no changes here from what we discussed last week. A new three-story building, fully programmed for the needs based on these two grade levels. Again, the concept here is to kind of have the classrooms on the backside facing, which is really natural space right now. Again, that's something that's important. We just talked about natural light, but that connection to nature is really important when students are in a classroom. And then, we have what I would call the big box spaces, or the public spaces on the front side of the building, auditorium, gymnasium, cafeteria, et cetera. That concept follows up all three stories. The idea there is you can shut off the back half of the building if you need to in the evening for an event. The gymnasium can still be open. The auditorium can still be open. The rest of the building can be secure. Yes?
Sorry. One more question on the cafeteria. Can you state for, as well, for the community as well as for us, the capacity of students that could fit in the cafeteria as well as a cafe?
I don't remember the exact count for here, but based on the way we've designed this building, you would not be doing five or six lunch periods. So, we've designed this cafeteria. I can get you the numbers on that, but you're basically looking at two or three lunch periods at the most. This is, just for clarification too, we have multi, there's additional seating on the second floor, open on the third. So, there's plenty of seating in this space. That, again, the concept, classrooms along the back, and then a lot of these spaces that you see here are two-story or multi-story spaces for the volume, such as the auditorium, gymnasium, et cetera. And then, just looking at the renderings, this is again, a conceptual plan, but to give you an idea, we're looking at, you know, having as much natural light come into the building as possible in the spaces that make sense. Parking in the front, you have an idea of the volume of spaces here in the bottom in terms of the gymnasium, classrooms, some STEM classes, the entrance, auditorium. And then, as I mentioned at last week's meeting, we've lessened some of these overhangs where relevant, without sacrificing the design to reduce construction costs. So, the design and the facade and the nomenclature that you see here is generally the same, but in areas where we don't need large overhangs, we've removed those to cut costs.
Preface this by saying, this is by far not my expertise. A flat roof, as the technology advanced, because the old way, I think, was you don't do flat roofs in the Northeast, because you got snow and you want sort of, what is it called? Hip roofs?
Or a gable roof.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Is that not a concern here, or?
Flat roofs are used predominantly on commercial buildings, even in the Northeast. So, it's a function of the structure underneath. It's much more economical from a standpoint of mechanical system, surface area covered, drainage. If you're looking at solar panels, there's a, you know, in the future, you can do them on pitch roofs or a gable roof, but you do have more surface area when you have a flat roof or something, like solar panels as an example.
But it doesn't necessarily, is there a trade-off, like if you had, as you said, some sort of pitched, and I know these are just rendering, so I don't know if there will be pitched, but if you had the pitch, does it help, in the pro column, like, well, it gets you a longer roof lifespan, but in the con column, yeah, maybe you can't do as many solar panels. I mean, I know it's getting a little weedy, but I just see a nice flat roof, and just wanted to confirm that that's not like, there's trade-offs there if we go that route or this and that route.
Yeah. I mean, from a cost standpoint, your flat roof's going to be more economical long run. I feel Paul creeping up behind me. I don't know if he wants to...
The technology on roofing has dramatically gotten better. So, right now, you're getting 25, 30 years on a flat roof. So, with the insulation level, the flat roof is the most economical and one of the better ways to go. So, to do a pitched roof, a gable roof on this building would be considerably more expensive.
Chris, one question on the, just above the science lab. Is that an open airspace or is that a closed space?
Right here?
Yes.
Currently, that's proposed as an open airspace.
Okay.
Are people going to actually be there? Because there's people in the, it looks like they can just leap off.
There is, no, they can't leap off.
I assume not. I assume there's just like, that's not the level of detail that's in this illustration.
Correct. Yes.
I notice that there are people standing on top of the science lab, and other people will notice that there are people standing on top of the science lab.
Yeah. No, there would definitely be, and it's probably hard to see, but there is a railing system there that would prevent anybody...
Sorry. What is that intended to be? I'm not sure. I'm not really sure what I'm looking at there.
So, that's adjacent to the library space. So, it's basically... So that's adjacent to the library space, so it's basically just an outdoor study area.
Okay, it's an outdoor study area with a railing. We're railing high enough for anybody to climb on or off, correct?
Say that again?
Meaning it's a very high enough space that's secured so that no individual can climb on or off.
Oh, yes, of course. Yes.
And all of this, none of this is set in stone. These are just potential renderings.
Yeah, this is conceptual, so.
Right, so the design, real nitty-gritty of the design phase is to come much farther after tonight.
Much later on. That is absolutely correct.
Sorry, just related to that, as you go into the more nitty-gritty, could, would it be a huge cost implication if that was covered and an indoor space?
To make an indoor space, it would add costs or you would have a roof system.
Or even covered so that they're, like, right now, it's an open area space where the weather elements can come through.
Correct.
If that were covered and it's still somewhat an outdoorsy space, could that be a possibility?
Sure. Yeah, these are all things as we get into construction, design development, construction documents. We're picking materials. We're refining spaces. We're refining program. It's been four years, three years since we've done this program, so obviously there's going to be minor tweaks and changes that happen within Paul's budget, of course.
Yeah, fair enough. I just want to be sure that as we're using spaces, spaces are, we have more runway to use space rather than it being limited.
Yeah, for sure. Then we look at briefly here at the site. So as we talked about last week, we have this area that is part of the bond project, which would include some grass area that we're going to have to disrupt for storm drainage, so there will be some outdoor space for students there. And then the balance of the space in the back here, we'll talk about, just to keep it simple for now, it would be the sports fields that we talked about last week, the tennis courts, et cetera. We're going to talk about those in the budget options here a little bit later in the presentation. Then we look at Claremont. This program again is the same kitchen cafeteria space, so we're taking over the two adjacent classrooms that we talked about last week to expand the cafeteria. This would be the new server room and kitchen. That would allow to have more actual seating area. We're also moving music to the two classrooms on the backside of the stage, so they have appropriate classrooms. We're adding an elevator to allow for ADA access to this new proposed additions, which will include an additional six classrooms on the back of the floor that we just recently built. And then an extension of that asphalt parking area in the back to allow for the buses to continue their ability to maneuver back there. Then below, at grade level, we have the open air fitness space. And then this is just an enlarged plan of what we talked about last week. So you can see right here at the bottom, these are the two classrooms that become the kitchen and serving area, more seating area, circulation area, all that equipment that we saw last week when we had the board meeting. At Claremont, we'd be removed out of that space, so students have the ability to use that as seating. And then moving music out of this kind of backroom storage area to the two classrooms across the hall. And then here, we have the six classrooms that are being added to the four that we just recently completed. Egress stair and then below would be the open air fitness area. Any questions on the scope?
This, is there anything changed in these slides than what we saw and talked about last week?
No.
Just like before, okay.
No, same, same exact scope as last week.
And sorry, just for a reiteration on this one, this particular area and space at some point can be covered with the addition of electrical plumbing and HVAC?
Yes, if you wanted to enclose this space in the future, you would have the ability to do so.
Okay, and from a plumbing perspective, with the plumbing, I mean, there would need to be something underground, but that would have to be, it would have to dig up this space in order to install plumbing for the future?
Yeah, so without knowing what the program would be, if you wanted to put plumbing in this space in the future, it's very common, it's not difficult. You would just saw cut the floor for the appropriate drainage or water lines and then you would reconcrete over it.
Okay. And that's, that would be a high cost to do, or from what you're saying, it sounds like it would be a simpler cost rather than a higher cost?
It depends on the amount of plumbing you're putting in, but it's very common to go.
Bathrooms.
Yeah, that's, it's not impossible. It's not extremely expensive. If you put it in now, is it cheaper? Sure, but you don't know what the program is, so you could waste money by putting in plumbing now that doesn't fit a program in the future.
Clear. Yeah, no, I just want to just be sure that what could be as a future, should a future board come back and say, we'd like to cover this space. And by the way, if you're having that kind of activity out there and you want to have a restroom.
Sure.
That there's, that the ability to be able to do that.
Yep, absolutely.
Moving on to the cost of this project, and again, this is, these are the same sites as you saw last week, but the, reviewing the Austin High School additions and renovations is now at 67.1 million. The seven, eight building with the, just the site work that is necessary to support the building is 130.9 million. And the Claremont Elementary that you just saw is 12.2 million. So the whole program is now at 210 million, 215,000. Again, this is a slide that you saw last week. This was, the top end of this slide is the budget appropriations by year that you've already approved. And it's to give you an idea of the work that you've been accomplishing, and you'll see that as we go further, over the course of year, the course of the last few years. And then we have another slide that backs it up around 10 years that Jaren and I will be going over. But it shows you that the Park Elementary School is the one that is on the construction as we speak, due to be completed by January. Brookside Elementary School, the addition there is up in state ed right now, waiting for their review and approval. We're anticipating that going out the bid. We're hoping for in the fall so that we can get a spring start on that. That's what we're looking for from the state. The access drive to Stormy Town Road and the AMD air conditioning was what was approved in this year's budget. And at the same time, you're performing a district-wide energy performance contract. And your contract for energy performance is a lot larger than that. This is the work in the 24, 25 school year that you're performing in that, on the energy, energy performance contracts. And then the budget appropriation by year on what's proposed, the Brookside Elementary cafeteria renovation and kitchen. So Brookside needs basically the same work, but not as big as Claremont's, but it needs a cafeteria and kitchen renovation, which is, and that one, to gain more space, removes the stage, and right now, the stage is being used by three offices. So the offices move into the new building over, that is going to be built next year. And then you gain that space for additional cafeteria space without having to construct an addition onto the cafeteria. And then the next two will be talked about as we go down. This is a budget appropriation if you so decide to go down that road. We would need 5.4 million dollars in the, out of your 25, 26 budget and 2.5 out of your 26, 27 budget. But we, there's other parts of this presentation that you need to go, because there's options that you need to look at.
When you say building athletic improvements, you're referring to the turf fields, the bleachers, the lighting, all of that?
That's correct.
Okay.
The turf field, the bleachers, the lighting sidewalks going down there, additional storm drainage, right, developing that whole lower section of the site.
Just, just to get clarification on that, though, last week, there was a part that is also noted on the slide that's already in the bond. That's the basic sidewalk.
And let me go back to that.
Right, and then there was a make it a grass field. And then there was sort of like, it's like the gold, silver, bronze, like then you had the turf field, tennis courts, everything. The breakdown that you're suggesting to put that into 25, 26 and 26, 27, is that all go towards that third option, which is the tennis courts?
The option C that you saw originally, correct.
So how do you get to option B, which was to do the grass?
Option B was for regrading and taking out the trees and regrading. The area that we need, the first tier that you see on this plan, and I don't know where's the, where's the, okay, this area right in here is the area of the site that is needed with the building. So what we did was we included the site work that is required to build that building in with the building cost. So that's in that 130 million dollar price tag.
So we've gone from the three options, the first one was never an option. The first one was going to be.
Correct, it had to be built with the building.
So we got, we went from three things last week and now we've taken down to two?
No, there's still, yes. If you don't approve going forward with the turf fields and the, the turf fields and the tennis courts in that area, and you want to develop that area, that would fall into the 25, 26 budget.
And that's 1.3 million.
Right, that was the 1.3.
That's correct.
But that's.
It's not in the 210.
It's not in the 210, that's correct.
Right, but it's not here.
It's not listed here.
Proposed either.
Right. The reason for that is, is that if you go with the, basically right under 8 million, it's 7, 9, for the development of the whole field project, that includes that 1, 3.
But what if we just want to do the 1, 3?
Then that would show up in your 25, 26 capital project.
Okay, so there's, in theory, what you're broken out here with the 5, 3, 8, 7, and the 2, 5, 7, 7, put those together, that gets you the turf fields, the tennis courts. But yes, there is that other 1.3 that we could do if we didn't want to do the 8 million or so.
That's correct.
That gets you the grass, the grass field.
That's correct.
Okay.
So for the 210 million, which we have labeled up here as proposition one, as we'll talk about, for the financing, we were able to achieve the tax neutral project or no increase in tax levy due to the district's use of capital reserves, which you see in column two here, which offset the initial estimated project costs and delay the borrowing until the 25, 26 fiscal year, creating debt service in 26, 27 to align with the total projected building aid. Now, the tax neutral project is created because of the debt service, which you see in column three, which is your total principal and interest each year, is offset by the building aid as well as the budgetary appropriations, the transfer to capital. And when you take the total debt service and offset it with the building aid and the budgetary appropriations, which is that shift of the transfer to capital to the debt service line, the local share is a negative. So there's room left in that 6.9. And through that, the tax levy or the budget is not increased to create a increase in that tax levy year over year. So we have the 0%.
Quick question on that, sorry if I missed.
Yes.
The delayed or the phasing of what happens between 24, 25 to 26, 27, is that phasing is dependent upon SED doing what its job is, not so much a phasing due to some tax benefit, right?
Correct, yes, yes. It would, it would be, and the use of capital reserve. So capital reserves are used initially to offset the borrowing for the project. So in 24, 25, instead of borrowing, the cap reserve is used to pay that initial 8, 8, 3, 9, 7, 9, 5.
But that would change if there was an acceleration in SED to get us to, to be able to break ground sooner, correct?
That would.
Meaning that, because we're going to end up having to pay sooner if SED accelerates their approvals?
If the estimated project, well, the project cost, though, that we're estimating off of Paul's scope, would stay the same there and would have that 8 million of costs in 24, 25. So that's what we're basing the projection off of here.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick clarification question? I noticed on our total projected building aid, that column is the amount that we think the state is likely to reimburse us?
Correct.
Okay, and then the projected local share is what essentially we would be putting in from our budgetary appropriations?
Exactly.
And there is a slight difference between the two of, I don't know, 50 to 60,000 dollars approximately every year. And if the projected building aid fluctuated, went down a percentage point, up a percent, you know, let's say down a percentage point, because that would really be most concerning to us, would we, this local share less budgetary appropriation would be, we'd be able to absorb some of the changes with that money theoretically?
Correct.
Thank you.
I've got a couple, but I just wanted to get, any other board members have questions about this slide? Okay, so just, just staying on column four, that building aid. Remember our discussion back in the fall, at the time, it was 69% payable. I think it came back 67%. We were a little surprised that it went down.
67.5.
Sorry, I forgot half a point off. Sorry about that. So the question becomes, in future years, I remember us, we asked at the time, you know, that, that number could change annually, correct? It could go up, it could go down. It's been a constant, but it could go up and down. So if it goes down and then column four numbers go down, we just gotta, what, find the money to cover the delta, the gap on that?
From column seven.
From column seven. Now, column seven is about 30, 60. So is it, is my understanding column seven essentially what would be left in the capital reserve if we didn't refund it, fill it up any more than that? Or is that?
Not the capital reserve, but the transfer to the capital line that is being shifted to the debt service line in the budget. So that 6.9 million that is in the transfer to capital right now, that is used for the budgetary capital projects, that then when the bond comes online or the debt service comes online, the, that will be shifted to the debt service line of the budget in that same amount. If it's not there, then that will not allow for the bond to continue to go forward. But the, in terms of the, to answer your question, and I think it's the same question that we were just asking here, there is room in the projection to absorb those up and down in the building ratio.
And where is that noted?
Well, it's, it's, this is estimated as 67.5.
Okay.
But it is the local share less budgetary appropriations, which are the, have a little bit of room in there, as well as our conservative budgeting of the rates, as well as the state's assumed rate that the aid is calculated off of.
Right, but you, so we've got about, you know, it goes from 30 to 60, 60, 60, 60. We've got about 60,000 in, and if I'm characterizing this wrong, tell me, but 60,000 in pad if the state aid goes down. But if you go down, let's just say a percentage point, will that 60,000 be enough to cover a drop from, say, 67 and a half to 66, 65? Or does that 50, 60,000 not, like, how much would that cover if the state aid changed?
It would be enough to cover a percent.
One point?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but if it goes three points, right?
So that, we. Go three points? Go three points down in a single year? Over a period of time, it could and goes up and down. Over a period of time, it could and goes up and down, but the typical movement is down a point, up a point, down a point, up a point.
But if hypothetically, like, cause we just lost a point and a half, right? We went from, by math right, 69 to 67 and a half. So if, I get it, and so yes, the historical, you can only base, future based on historical, right? Past, but past performance is not a guarantee of future. Like, it's, it's one of those footnotes you see at the bottom. I'm just saying, so if that happens, you know, we can't predict the future. If that happens, where do we go get the additional money to cover it from? It comes out from another line, or where does it come from?
A couple of things, and we mentioned this last week. With regard to the building aid, as soon as the board makes a determination about the scope, our team will be going up to state aid and having a conversation with them to get a better understanding of what would be aidable. And they are the experts as to what is aidable. I have never seen, since I've been here from 2011, any decreases in our building aid. It was the first time that happened this year. So I, I find it atypical for this school district, mainly because one of the variables has to do with poverty and enrollment. And those numbers for us, or, or those, those factors for us have not gone down, but have gone up. So with regard to the state aid, if there is a major change in the state aid, what happens is we get our projections with the governor's budget, and we run all of our revenue, like, so it's just not building aid. There's other aids, our foundation aid, all of that comes together, and then we determine what our projected revenue is. If there's a shortage, then, and we don't have enough revenue in a particular year, then we have to examine whether or not we reduce expenses to match the level of revenue, including building aid and other sources.
Can I clarify, just as we're talking, just so that we're all using the same terms and the public is understanding, the capital reserve and the capital line are two very different things. Capital reserve, we have established as a place that we can take monies from fund balance, and we can move them into those reserves, and we can use those reserves for capital projects. Capital line is money that the community authorized to be raised every, every, every year. Quite a few years ago, it was raised to 6.9 million, and that's the money that we're using to convert into our, our debt servicing funds. Do I generally have that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So there's been some conversations about how we're going to cover the exhaust, the exhaustion of our transfer to capital line. Like I said, when I first got here, the number was 675, and we were able to build it over less than a 10-year period to 6.9, because it's been at 6.9 for several years. If we do not consider using the, the funding that's available for the, this is the wrong slide. If we, this is, this slide shows if we were using, not including the entire AMD field project. So you'll remember, for the transfer to capital, we definitely have to do Brookside in 25, 26. AMD is just the basic work at 1.3. And then maintenance and project capital work, what's remaining for Jared's type of projects for the 25, 26-year budget, is $2.9 million. We also know that we have debt from the library retiring in 2005, '06 of 1.1. So the total available for Jared's projects in 25, 26 is $4,098,260. So obviously, that's not going to be an issue. And we have never used that amount of money in a specific year, in one year, to cover Jared's projects or the director facilities. In '26, '27, we still have the 50,000, and we also have the 1.1 from the library debt that still is available until they want to get back, until they decide when their vote is and whether it's approved, and then we'll calculate what the, the new debt service payment is for the library. So in '26, '27, the available amount for Jared's projects is 1.189 million. In 2007, '08 is the first year you'll see that we need to start to consider maybe needing to increase the transfer to capital line, either by reducing another area in the budget and increasing that line. However, in looking at the total projects, oh, from like, the last four years, last five years, and then '24, '25, the total amount that's associated with Jared's projects is 5.6 million, or 939,000 per year. The above schedule allows for 2.7 per year over a three-year period, three times more than in the past five years and next year's budget. So there is money available for Jared's projects, and I don't believe that we will have an issue, and I will, we can demonstrate that with the following guide. So who wants to do it?
Alita, before we move off of that, can, I'm having trouble understanding where the budget appropriation projects for the 7, 8 turf and athletic fields come into play with this chart?
It doesn't.
Okay.
This assumes that we're not doing that.
Okay, got it. So if we wanted to do those, we'd basically have to take it out of?
Yes.
Here? Okay.
Or the 1.3 million, right? That's not even.
The 1.3 is here. It's AMD site work, earth ground and field work.
That was that.
Right, that's the 1.3? Okay.
Yeah, so it includes that other.
Okay, so that's accounted for.
And, and the Brookside cafeteria is accounted for as well?
So I just, me and Jared and, and Paul, we went through all of the projects, and I can share the document with you. We've shared it with you in the past, and it's linked here in this presentation. Of all of the projects the school district has done over the past 10 years, which amounts to 134,807,000. So when we look at all of those projects, what we did was look at the infrastructure projects. Those are the things that we would be most concerned about failing. So we all sat and looked at the most significant things, and also applied what we believe the period of probable use is, which means how long are these things going to last? So I'm gonna have our expert, between Jared and Paul, go through this, this chart.
Let me start out by saying that I'm gonna bring it back to the bond, the other bond that was completed in 2018 in that ballpark. But that bond, if you remember back to it, was for infrastructure of the buildings. Because at that time, when we came into 2016, when that bond was being presented, what the buildings, the buildings were in need of a lot of work, mainly infrastructure work. Boilers, roofs, windows, those type of things, masonry repair. So that bond took care of all of your, the majority of your infrastructure needs, to bring your buildings back up to the standard they need to be, so that you can now work on your program requirements and such like that. But, so this chart broke down, what we were trying to do is assess what major system is there, what year it was installed, so we can get a better idea of when you're going to be replacing it, so you know when to start putting money away for it. And that's what, and so it gives you actually a pretty good picture in that you've stayed on top of it, especially since I've been here, on maintaining your buildings and maintaining the infrastructure. So we're not anticipating that you're going to have major infrastructure failures coming up. When we started the 2016 bond, an infrastructure failure was commonplace at that time. So right now, we're not expecting that to happen, and I'll let Jared go through because it was a common, that was a combination between the bond and then the capital projects that Jared was doing.
So, right. So when you, when you look at this list, this is not necessarily the year that the work was done. This was the, in, in most cases, this is the year that the work was budgeted, right? So the work may have taken place a year or two after it was budgeted, just because of the way the process works. But what this, what this list shows you is we went through and, and there was a, it shows you there's a significant amount of work has been done on all these, these major infrastructure items. So we just wanted to illustrate that and show you that. There are a couple of areas that are highlighted in yellow where we anticipate needing to spend some money. So like, for example, of the A and D field track, the turf field was redone, but the track is reaching the end of its useful life. So that is an area where we're probably gonna have to spend some money. And then security cameras are one of those things, that the technology evolves, and it's, it's kind of a constant where you're constantly upgrading and replacing and installing new software and things like that, but also hardware. But this gives you a, a, a good overview of the major, kind of the heart of the building type of items that are, that are in all of our buildings.
So as we wrap up here, just wanna go through the timeline again. Tonight, we're looking to do seeker resolution for lead agency, and then also confirmation of the project scope, so that we can have a conversation with SED, as Alita mentioned. Last week, we had this timeline kind of lumped together, so that was my fault. We do have to do lead agency, that's what we're looking for tonight, as you probably remember from other seeker processes that we've done. That's part of the legal process, is declaring lead agencies, so we have to notify other potential interested agencies. They have up to 30 days to respond. We typically find, and that, that is less than getting responses back. Our team usually can reach out to them and get responses back from other interested parties that they're not interested in being the lead agency, usually, so that we can move forward with the final seeker resolution. Right now, we're looking at, as Mary said, probably July 24th, July 25th. That's more than the 30 days, but we anticipate that we'll have lead agency wrapped up prior to that. On the 25th or the 24th, whatever you determine, we look for seeker resolution and resolution for the bond proposition. The next milestone that we have would be August 10th, or hopefully earlier, which would be advertising for the bond vote to meet the September 24th bond vote date. These are the dates that we have to hit in order to make September 24th work.
And just to highlight something, I had Illy call again today, the Board of Elections. That date is the date. She called again. You know, it's early fall, the date of the vote, but I know people thought maybe October you could have done, but that's the date told by the Board of Elections. I actually, at the Westchester Putnam School Board's Dinner, where I was with Annie and Melissa, I bumped into a gentleman who provides software for voting machines, and I literally almost begged him, can you sell me a couple of machines? So he laughed and said, no, he couldn't, but, so anyway, we have been looking at that. That is the date because of circumstances beyond our control, and a pretty well-known national election that's taking place, and what people need to do to get their machines ready. I also think, just, just for clarification, cause there is another presentation, the slide that Paul had up there about, and Alita had up there, we, we've been using the terminology, option B, the 1.3. So it included in the 210, and it bears repeating, is just the site work to make the PE area, which Paul highlighted. The next option is you can just grade the 60% grade, grass that field, you know, stripe it for whatever sports you need, put baseball on it. You would have to use the 1.3. A way to do the gold one, option C, as, the gold one, I like that one, Roger, is that you would have to use reserves the way it was illustrated here.
Okay, so that actually leads me to my question there. So then we wouldn't, based upon what you said, Mary, and what I'm hearing.
Capital, right.
We wouldn't be doing an option B, would just be an option A?
Apologize, capital line, not. You would have to make a decision on, do you want just, just the recreation area? If you want to do the 1.3, you have to use your capital line to do that. And if you want to use your capital line and use it in the way that was illustrated, which we saw before, and lean into this debt coming off, that's how you would fund the option C, or the gold one.
Okay, so there, got it. So then it's, if, I think I got it. So option C is really a, like, we're still saying a choice one, choice two, or we're not saying choice one, choice two, we're saying it's really just choice one, we have another way to get to choice two, which is that gold, through a different means?
We, we funded ourselves.
I guess what we're trying to say is that the other option, this is what's confusing the conversation, there was a thought that you'd want to have it as proposition two.
Right, right, yeah.
Right, okay, so that's where the two is coming in.
So call it proposition two, but proposition, okay, so I just wanna make.
Proposition two, if you wanted to have a contingent alternate proposition on the September 24th referendum, that was a thought that we explored. However, then you could still do that, and there's a slight tax increase, correct?
Right, but.
0.38%?
What is it?
Correct. Yes, 0.38.
In total?
Correct, yes, phased in over five years.
In total, so zero point, okay. So I guess what it sounds like is it makes sense to have an option one, option two, to, so this way we have what we said to, just that basic field, right? And then we would still have a 1.3 in a capital line to be able to, to grade and do the other field?
Correct, and that leaves you more flexibility in the capital line.
Correct, so flexibility to do that, cause then we, that we can do ourselves. And then option two would be do it all, and it would be a very small increase, a 0.38 spread out over five years.
As a referendum.
As a referendum, but it would be, that would be the option two.
Now, is, is there a third option where we do the 0% bond, and then we essentially drain our, our capital to do the turf and the athletic?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, but you're not draining it, you're just using it for that, those two years. And when the money is available to, the money is available to pay for the premium for the bond once we issue it.
Okay.
In the following year.
Can I ask if my, my notes and my understanding is correct on this? So we can have a proposition one, which is a 0% bond, we separately fund the Brookside Kitchen, the grass field ourselves, leaving us with approximately 5.3 million in capital. I'm gonna call it a cushion, for lack of a better word. Or we don't do the grass field at 1.3 million, and then we have a 6.6 million capital cushion, and that's sort of a proposition one. There's also a proposition one that we do all of that, and then we pay for the tennis courts and the fourth turf field out of our capital reserves. Is that also correct?
I'm sorry, I won't.
Okay. So you have a proposition one, I'm talking about two versions of a 0% bond. 0% bond, I get everything that's included in that. What's not included in that, that we would need to separately fund, Brookside Kitchen, grass field, fourth turf field and tennis courts, if that's what we wanted to do, which would reduce, would significantly leave us with no sort of, like, that would take up whatever we have left of our capital reserve. And then proposition two would be a 0.38% bond. We still separately fund the Brookside Kitchen, but the turf field and the tennis courts come from that 0.38% increase in the, from the bond, and we have approximately 6.6 million in a capital reserve.
No. The 6.6 million is in your transfer to capital line.
Okay.
You have to use that line in 25, 26 for a capital project, whether it's part of the bond or not part of the bond. You have to use that money. You have to use the 6.9, and you have to use the 1.1, because if you don't, your tax levy limit is going to be negative.
Okay.
It will go down. It will go down. So no matter what you decide tonight, there has to be some project scope that's agreed upon, and it doesn't have to be agreed upon now, because it's part of the '25, '26 budget conversation like we discussed last year. That's what, that's where we, it's not the reserve, the reserve is separate, it's the capital line. So again, in the first year, '25, '26, we have no scope, except for Brookside at 2.7 and the 1.3, and then enough money for Jared at 2.9 plus the 1.1. So the money available for Jared in this, assuming that we don't do anything with the above and beyond AMD's fields, Jared has $4 million. So, and then, in the '26, '27 school year, there's another 1.1 available, just because of the debt falling off from the library. So again, when you look at the total in this chart, which assumes, again, that we're not doing the AMD project, separate and apart from the bond, and that money is available, you'll see from Jared's projects that there's $5.6 million. And again, when you look at the five years, he has, on average, spent $939,000 per year. So if you look at that 5.6, that's way more than enough to cover any future projects that we need to cover. And as was stated in the previous slide, they are limited to the fields at AMD and security cameras.
So help me understand the title, reserves.
Reserves is like the tax reserve, like the two capital reserves.
In the chart, right? Because that's...
But this chart doesn't reflect reserves.
But, so why does it, I'm trying to understand, it says reserves.
But there's nothing there. There's nothing there.
So when it says reserves, and there's the 4 million?
That's the total amount for Jared. The column, it says annual available maintenance capital work, $4 million. So that's adding the 2.9 and the 1.1 to get to the 4, and then in this year, the 1.18, and then the total is 5.3. So there's nothing in the rows for reserves.
Okay.
So what's the 409826, where's that coming from? The transfer to capital or the reserves?
It's the transfer to capital line, so again, the 2.9, where it says maintenance, project, capital work, transfer to capital, 2.9. Then, retired debt, 1.1. So you combine both of those to get to 4098, and then again, transfer to capital, you have that 50,000 available, retired debt is 1.1, and so in year two, you have 1.189, add the 50,000, and the third year, you have 5.3 million for Jared's projects. Again, if you choose not to use these funds toward paying for the full scope of the AMD fields.
Okay, so where does the, like, the 5.3, where does that reside?
In the budget.
Okay.
In the '25, '26 budget.
And it has, it has to be...
It has to be expended on a capital project.
So just back to Catherine's question, proposition-wise, all we have to do for a proposition, we've got to decide as a board, do we want to keep, what, the 0% 210, or do the 0.38 with the fields? We don't have to put up for proposition now, anything happening in '25, '26, '26, '27, that's a future discussion, right? So the actual proposition timed to the September 24th, that we got to decide on tonight, right?
I think the idea is, obviously, you're not voting on a proposition, you're just voting as a lead, to be the lead agency for seeker. However, in order for us to move forward, we need to be able to communicate what the full scope is. So if the full scope does not include the AMD field as part of the bond, then we need to know that today.
Right, right. And, sorry, the AMD field, meaning, all the way with the tennis courts and everything? Yeah, okay. Because I mean, I think by not considering it at this point in time, that puts us kind of in arrears later, for if we don't, and it's just, I guess the question here is, should we, would it make sense just to kind of like have the full kit and caboodle of the AMD fields, and then later on, we can scope it down, right?
We were advised that that, I mean, you can do anything right now.
If we needed to, if we needed to, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying that we're going to, I'm just saying, if, that's an if. It's a big if. So I'm saying, okay, let me just rephrase that, because I know I probably confused you. So, right now, we say AMD, all of it, tennis courts, turf fields, everything, right? So that's the, whatever that was, it was like a total of $8 million, right? Have that seeker approved, because the seeker, the lead agency there comes back and says we're good, green light, and at some point, but then they green lighted all of that, meaning that that doesn't, that allows us to be able to do that, whether we decide now, whether we decide after the seeker approval or through the process, that we're not, that maybe we're going to do something a little bit simpler, but we're already approved for the seeker to do it. Is that correct?
I certainly think part of it, Roger, is what do we tell the community, you know? Like, if we say we're going to do this, we're, let me unpack this a little bit better, take a bigger balcony view. So, anyone jump in if I mess this up? So at the end of the day, technically, we have a bond referendum for 210.
Yes.
And we've got this site work that's right here.
Yes.
You can fund the 1.3, which is 60% grading and grass, by using the capital line in the budget.
Correct.
And you've got 6.9, and it's 1.3.
Yep.
In the year that we would need to do that, we also have the Brookside Cafeteria, which is 2.7.
Yes.
So you add them both together, and you see what's left over.
Right.
Right? And you could, that would be for Jared's projects, additional AC, whatever you wanted. You could, by a chart that was described before, commit, where here, or this board could commit, to saying, I'm going to use part of that this year and the previous year to fund that entire field in the back.
Okay, all right, it's clicked, it's clicked.
Right, so that's it. The other option before, and I do apologize for the confusion, but there was so much, you've got multiple things going on, and then this debt that's in that capital line. The library wants to be able to use that line several years from now. You can't reduce it from a budget, because they were looking for a budget neutral, so we have to maintain it. So what are you going to use it for?
Yeah.
You're going to use it towards this. And now, that was a new variable added. The downside of that is that you now have committed a budget for two years, what were the two years, the amount of money on that chart that was up there Paul had?
1.139, is that it?
Yeah, it's, it's the...
Go bring that chart back up, because it shows it clearly, the breakdown. Right there, okay? You'd have to commit in, for '25, '26, 5.3, and then in '26, '27, 2.5, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Obviously, in '25, '26, the 5.3 million, if you go for, that includes the 1.3 site work, because in order to build what you got to build there, you got to do the site work, right? Right?
So, in short, there's cushion to be able to do the work because of the '25, '26, the '27, '28, there's room to do that in the future because of the way that this has been structured. So this makes more sense of what, so in totality, just so I'm clear in my head, it makes sense to do the full thing from a seeker review, to have that full, the fields and everything?
We can do the seeker review for it, and it's, and there was this thought that you could do an alternative contingent proposition, but by doing it this way, you don't have to. And technically, you don't have to make a decision on this until your budget development for, you know...
It's like, we could decide AC somewhere else is more important to us.
Yeah.
We could do work at Rosago.
Right, okay.
Right, yeah, so that's why I'm saying, I like the flexibility of this, that's what I like, so I appreciate it.
Clarification, the retiring debt, that's capital line debt, it can only be used for capital? The 1.1?
No, it's debt service, it's in the debt service line, but it's part of the tax cap calculation. So if that number goes away also, it will reduce the tax levy limit by like 1%.
Could that be put into, does that have to be spent? Could it be put into a reserve?
No, it has to be, it has to stay in the budget.
You have to spend.
Because what happens with the calculation, it actually, after you add all of the projects, rent, capital projects, debt service, you have to go down at the end and subtract reserves, you subtract building needs. So by putting it in reserves, you're just taking away from the scope in the budget. So you are lowering the tax levy limit by putting it in reserves.
It's like the same thing that happened to us this year, right, Alida? Similar conversation.
Right, like, the way that we're using reserves for this bond is we're using it as an offset. So it's not the same as using it to reduce or to apply towards the budget. It's very different. But you have to use it towards an item that is considered exempt in the tax levy limit calculation.
Okay.
And those items include debt service and capital projects.
Okay, I'm pretty sure...
That's money we have to use.
You have to use it, either way, you have to use it. It's up to the board. I don't, I just want to clarify that we don't have flexibility with regard to determining what the scope is going to be today. We have to be in a position to move forward so people understand what we're doing before the school year ends. And when we spoke to both the bond counsel and our legal general counsel, they both said that they do not recommend the school district doing or proposing that, like, putting up the proposition and saying, we may do it as an option, and then taking it off. They said it's confusing, and it's also an opportunity for someone to pick apart the bond and make an appeal to the Commission of Education.
So Alida, correct me if I'm wrong, but the proposition itself, when you read it, includes all that scope?
The seeker, and I'm going to defer to them, we told them that the seeker that they're going to develop will include the full scope of the project, the full AMD fields, is that correct? Okay. So the seeker that they're doing is going to include all of that. However, again, today, all you have to do is the lead agency, but for us to move forward, and with the short timeline that we have, and to do the public relations, we have to make a decision today what the scope is going to be.
So for that, I have a question. I thought my question was answered, but I'm not sure. So this 1.3, do we have to decide today if that's going to be AMD site work? Or is that something that we could say, like, later, AC is more important? Correct me if I'm wrong, when we were talking about facilities update with Jared, he said that we don't have AC everywhere because, like, budget, we ran out of money.
Right, so the 1.3 million, again, assumes that we're not doing the entire field. So if we're not doing the entire field, no, we don't need to make a decision today about the 1.3 or the scope. However, we do have to communicate to the public that we're not considering doing the full field today.
So we can't say yes, and then later decide, actually, we want AC instead?
You don't have to make a decision about the funding that's available. That's 6.9 million, and the 1.1 is for budget discussions for the '25, '26 budget. Again, however, if you are deciding today that you want the full field project as part of the scope, we have to determine that today. If you want to say that we want a contingent proposition, and we're going to make the 8 million on a second contingent proposition, then we should be also deciding that today. So all of these, the only thing that doesn't need to be decided is how we're going to use this money, if we're not including it within the work, if we're not including it in the work and the scope of the project itself.
So you're asking us to decide, are we putting up and voting tonight to do a 0% bond or a 0.4%?
0.38.
Point, sorry, 0.38.
And I think, given all this, it shows you another option, you could, I don't mean to assume, you could make the decision, you don't need that contingent option on the September 24th referendum.
Right, if we wanted to push and find a way to do that, it sounds like we could find a way to do that, if that's where we wanted to prioritize.
Which was the point of doing that.
Understood, okay. I have to use the ladies' room.
I have a seeker question. So we're going to put out this seeker today, right? And it will include the AMD work in the case that we want to include that, we're probably just going to include anyways. And then, let's say we decide, you know what, we don't want to include the field work right now, but we want to reserve the right to do that a couple of years from now. Do we have to re-seeker that portion of the project? Or, is there like an expiration date on the seeker, I guess my question?
Yeah, so this seeker, all we're doing tonight is declaring lead agency, which tells other potential interested agencies what the scope of the project is. If you go to do another project later on, and it's that field, and say it's two or three years from now, you're going, a lot of the footwork has been done, but you would have to submit a new lead agency process and a new seeker resolution. It wouldn't be as involved, because a lot of the work's done, but you would have to do another one.
Okay. Alida, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding things, so I suspect that I might, so I'm needing some clarity here. On the slide that says funding for future maintenance capital projects, it's not this one, it's, slide six, I'm wondering, yeah, this one. So it looks to me like we're spending $939,000 a year on capital projects, and then, within three years, only budgeting $50,000 a year for that?
I guess, at the point of this, is that what's available is 5.3 million. So, just say, for example, Jared comes up with all the projects, we put it in a '25, '26 school year budget, then we do the project, that money is available. And we wouldn't have the same level of projects in the following years. So the point of this is just to show that in totality, we have 5.3 million available, which he only has used $935,000 per year in his projects. So there's plenty of money available for projects for him in the immediate future, and then when you look at the list of projects that we've done in its entirety, there's nothing that's going to come up that is...
Yes, because like, you know, that's going to last us, like, what, six years of work at the same pace, but we're saying we're not going to continue spending 600-plus thousand dollars a year, because we've already done so much heavy lifting and more expensive projects in the past five years.
Right, the other chart shows what the...
And these are cheaper, so we would anticipate that that $5.3 million, or however much it was, would last us more than six years, and that we can afford to only be adding $50,000 per year.
Well, this is just for illustrative purposes, so what would happen is, like, I can't carry that money over from year to year. We would have to develop a plan and try to develop the scope of the work that we know that we need to be done over a three-year period, and apply it to the 2025, '26 budget. It may be staggered in the way that we actually do the work, but if there, if we know for certain, like, we need to get those cameras done, we need to do that track, we can do that in '25, '26, and then that's really the only work that needs to be done based on our meeting with the period of probable usefulness in this document. So this is just to say, the money is available, and this document says that we don't need as much in the past because of all the projects that we've done.
I have to, and again, you've heard me say this, I want to congratulate Alida, Jared, and this board. You've been good stewards of the public property, you have been. So you basically built up, you've lowered your mitigation of risk in areas, you've got warranties on a lot of things, and this does a great job of showing it. There's a list here, very transparent way so that the community can see that. I think, only because it's, there are so many things happening right now in the state of New York, and I just want to add this little piece, not to confuse, but if you've been reading the papers, and particularly if you've been getting advocacy alerts from Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, or from the New York State School Boards Association, a bill... School Boards Association or from the New York State School Boards Association, a bill that will require the air conditioning of schools passed both houses. Now, in addition to that, it's sitting on the governor's desk. Earlier in the year, when we talked about moving the AC project out of the bond scope and putting it into the school district work, I mentioned the fact that I saw this coming and it, I couldn't give you a date when it would be required. But based on this piece of information, and I think Jared, Jared did a study of where we are with AC, we will have this building and park at Roosevelt at 100%. And can you, just for a second?
Yeah, sure. So Roosevelt's at 100% now, currently, but that's window units, I just understand that, that's window units. AMD will be at 100%. That project is, we just voted on that, right? And so that money's committed to putting the air conditioning in all the classroom spaces in AMD. With the EPC, we're going to 36 out of 42 classrooms at Brookside having air conditioning and 37 out of 43 at Claremont. So those two buildings are about 85-86% when you run the numbers. And the two areas where we are lacking is, we, 15 of 42 classrooms will have air conditioning when we're done with the addition at Park that we're building right now and the other HVAC work we're gonna be doing. That represents 36% of the classrooms. And then the high school, as of right now, again, remember, the EPC work is done at the high school, those units are up and running. 23 out of 74 classrooms have air conditioning at the high school, which represents about 31% of the rooms at the high school.
So Jared, just give, just a sense of cost. How many UNIVENTS you did at the high school and what's the price on that?
So we did.
It's under EPC though.
Right, we did at Brookside, Claremont and the high school, we did approximately 71 UNIVENTS. I can give you the exact number. But, and we pulled that out actually for this presentation, it's in one of the other slides that Paul did, that represented about $7.7 million worth of work in, within the EPC, right, in total. So, you know, you can do the math there. Now, remember, those are today's dollars, those are not, you know, dollars in the future, but it gives you a kind of sense of what it's gonna take to air condition a classroom.
So if a community member said, "Hey, I see this bond proposal out that you guys approved and you're doing field work, but the classrooms aren't air conditioned everywhere like 100% in all buildings," what would I say to that?
So the good news, the good news there, though, is anything that we're building, you know, in this bond work, will have air conditioning. That's already included in the budgets and all the numbers that you've seen, right? And then we've also done, you know, we've done our due diligence between the work in EPC and also will be included in this year's budget to do AMD to improve. We came a long way, you know, even in the last few years. I mean, we went from 26% of the classrooms at Brookside to 85%, right? That's one example.
I agree with you and I want to commend you for that work. I'm just saying, like, from the perspective of someone who has not been watching board meetings, and, you know, it's gonna be 90 degrees next week, so this conversation is coming up again, and they're like, "Why are you focusing on fields when we don't have full air conditioning?"
All right, so I want to take, I just felt it was my professional responsibility to bring this bill to everyone's attention. This is very new information, so we were building this. And it adds a little bit of a wrinkle, for lack of a better term, to the conversation. Alita, you can use your capital line for AC needs if they choose, right? You certainly do that. So at the end of the day, given the situation, remember the charge you gave us. The charge was, look at the bond, figure out a way to come in at zero to accomplish everything. And Alita and Paul and then Andrew from Fiscal Advisors basically went through it all to eliminate the need for the alternative proposition by looking at our capital line. And you've seen that tonight, but you're committing all of that money towards that. And we need to know if that's the scope you want to go, because we need to be honest and transparent with people on how we're spending it. The other little option for it, and the governor has not signed this bill, I just think it's, if it's not this year, it'll be next year or the following year, unless any of you from your professional industries have any other intel on this topic? There you go, okay. So my thought on this, and I'm a one person here, because then this team competed with a great deal of fidelity and efficiency, being able to deliver even the full scoped, I'll use Rogers' time, the gold standard of just a turf field, bleachers, everything. If you go with the option B, I'm gonna use that phrase, I know it's confusing to people, but the part where you grade the 60%, lay seed, do the site work, clear out the trees, have a grass field that you irrigate, you can stripe, you can add softball field, you can use that. You do have capital line money, which, Alita, is a billion gazillion percent right, you have to use it, we have to maintain that line for the library, but you could use it for air conditioning.
And we don't have to decide that tonight, or do?
You do.
If we're gonna use it for air conditioning?
No, not for air conditioning.
This is what I've been wondering, okay.
Right, okay, you'd have to use, you have to sign up on the scope. So the scope is, are you gonna do, and correct me if I'm wrong, the little recreation field that's included in the 210 million, is the scope going to be a 60% grade and a grass field? Or is the scope going to be the fully developed one? Correct me.
Yes, it's, the real question is that you have an option to do the gold standard, let's say, using Rogers' term, either as a proposition to, a secondary proposition for an increase in the tax levy, or use it within the transfer to capital and maintain the 0% tax levy. That's really what your choice is, that's what we're trying to let you know.
Is there an advantage to doing it, to putting that 0.38% up from either financial perspective now versus doing it in a budget or a capital down the road? Is, what are the advantages right now to say, "Yeah, do it now with the 0.38," financial or otherwise? Financial or architectural or structural or, are there none?
From an aid perspective, any transfer to capital project receives building aid without debt service. So doing any capital project through a transfer to capital line, the building aid, assuming the project's eligible for building aid, receives debt service, or excuse me, building aid back over 15 years or whatever the PPU is, without any corresponding debt service. So the transfer to capital projects that the district has been doing that receive debt service, or excuse me, receive building aid are advantageous as opposed to when you have debt service for the field.
So you're saying, doing it as part of a bond is better, it reduces the cost essentially?
Sorry, no, I wasn't making a comment on whether it's better to do a bond or transfer to capital. I was just making the point that transfer to capital projects in general that receive aid, those projects don't have corresponding debt service, so that difference between the debt service and the aid is advantageous.
Well, I get it, we won't, if we don't do, if we do it in the bond, we pay the interest on it. If we don't do it in the bond, we're not.
Yeah, so that was my only point.
But, but, but in terms of aid, are you saying it's more aidable if we put it in the bond?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So it's just really an interest, it's just really interest that we're.
Correct, yeah.
I have another question. I have a question, I think for Alita, in our kind of like long-term planning around this, not necessarily related to what we're doing tonight. But again, about this capital line that we're reducing. Hopefully not. Right. Right now in the bond, there's nothing that has anything to do with Roosevelt, right? But eventually, we're going to make some sort of choice about doing something with Roosevelt, and it's probably going to cost some amount of money, right? Is that going to be, like, that line item where we're adding only 50K and we have 6 million, like, is that the line item that's gonna represent any work that we do with Roosevelt?
No, again, like, everything has been built up, the whole financial plan related to capital work has been built over several years. So we got from 675 to 6.9 with a strategy, we developed two capital reserves with a strategy, so everything is also about timing. So we can't determine what the construction timeline is for Roosevelt, if any, without knowing when we need to, the kids need to be out of Roosevelt. So it's a whole larger plan. Can I give you an answer in totality about a whole financial strategy at this time? No, I cannot. But I do have experience, obviously, of building up our capital line and also building up our capital reserve. So that will be the goal, that whenever it's time, and we worked with Paul, like, we have a scope in mind already for Roosevelt. So we just need to move forward with this project to understand what year in which we're gonna have to have those funds, if any, available for Roosevelt. Our goal is not to change Roosevelt in such a dramatic way to increase costs, but to use it the way it's situated now and take advantage of some of those spaces, like the kitchen and the dining room and the, in the base, in the gym. So we, I can't give you an answer about a long-term strategy at this very moment with everything fluid, but I, we've done it in the past and we can do it in the future.
But we have the lease from 400exac, which is.
Yeah, so in discussing that money, I estimate that by the time we get to Roosevelt, it's gonna be in a neighborhood of $600,000. So, and that's an ongoing cost. So people also questioned, what about the $300,000 to $500,000 of operating expense with this bond? And so my thoughts is that those funds can be applied towards that.
Let me add one other item on Roosevelt. Remember that you can't start Roosevelt until you open up the 78 building, because you need to make the transition of the grades. So that has to occur first before you can start moving.
Right, and I understand that, we, I mean, we're just not ready to discuss that in some great level of detail, right? Because we don't have, we're just not there yet. But there will be something and it will have some cost.
But I think that Alita made an excellent point about that piece of math, right? So we're estimating its rent be up to $600,000. We're projecting three to maintain what we've done. Outside of just getting rid of property we don't own and renting, the savings alone will go towards renovation of Roosevelt. And of course, you will be able to use some of that money then to take care of the additional needs which are estimated at $300,000. It's for operating expenses, it's an excellent point.
Got it. And so that, we're, I think we're all, I'm very comfortable with like the five-year expenses that we've mapped out and outlined here, and then beyond that, I'm also comfortable that we have those other sources of revenue that we can utilize. Okay, I'm good, thank you. That, I really, there, I'm sure that others have questions, but I'm good.
Question about borrowing and the assumptions in the borrowing, and I know we've talked about this in the past. Can you talk a little bit about your estimates around interest rates?
Sure. Yeah, so right now, we're estimating a 4.15 interest rate, which obviously it's a few years out in the borrowing. That's higher than what we currently are right now. Bonds that sold today, we're at a net interest rate of the interest rate on the bonds less the premium received was a 3.86, I believe it was. So we're a little bit under that and have a little bit room in there with interest rates. And then for the state's assumed interest rate, we're at, we are estimating at 3.5%, which is the current SED if it was approved today, like, what it would be received. Obviously, we don't know where that would be in the future, but it's a conservative estimate to have over 50 basis points in there, which we do have.
Right, so I mean, for the purposes of our borrowing, it's close enough that you're giving cushion over current interest rates at the end of the decade. If in the future, interest rates were to go down, you'd have the opportunity to refinance those bonds, which would then, a future board, would might offset additional capital costs at that point, which is something that's happened over the last 15 years of the, you know, the bond that we've passed. So you look at the timing of the markets and things go up, go down, Alita's very good at this, and that may be a way that you bring your capital line back.
She's done that, she has done that, right. I also think it's important to reiterate the reason for the slight dip which we discovered. It had to do with a worldwide event, a pandemic, like, and the impact of that on New York City property. That's what impacted building aid for everybody in New York State, you know? So, and again, the trends of it and the forecasts, and you're right, Rob, we do read that all at the end of everything, but the pattern and the trend, that's what you base forecasts on, they have increased. And Austining has the two big factors that lead to more state aid, levels of poverty and enrollment, right?
So I know we have to try to move to decisions, so here's my thought on this. Much as I love the fields idea, I don't think the optics look great, that if we go with that option, it passes, and then you, Jared, gotta get everything up to 100% in five years, let's just say, the state gives us five years to do it, okay? That's a ton of money. That's a lot, that's gonna be a lot of money. Even if you've accounted for some of it here, it's gonna be much more than what's in there. I think that's fair to say. Plus, yes, the two highlighted items, I didn't, I forgot to ask, like, how much does that field track cost to do at AMD? That's gotta be a million, two million, give or take, if that goes, and then the security cameras. So there's a lot of expenses there. So to me, just as much as I like that, that optics just, well, you guys spent eight million plus interest, and there's other things, assuming it passes, and now we got 20 million to do air conditioning. Come on, why did you do that? So my vote would be to go with the 210, gives us a flexibility going forward. I like the 1.3 on that other field, sort of the silver option, but it gives us more flexibility. Even if it does pass, I'm not, I'm not, optics make me a little bit uncomfortable. So, that's just my two cents. But yeah.
Quick question, Alita, and from Mary, this is in regards to the green buses. I know that that referendum is coming down, right? I know that there's advocacy around it as well, but if, where does our bus contract money come out of?
The budget.
The budget, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Jack, so I knew you were trying to go to the mic, but I was just curious, is that an act assessment? And then how much do these yellow things would cost?
Your, the track resurfacing, you're probably in the, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but probably about $400,000 would be a concern.
Okay, so I went over, I went over that, it's about you. And how about the security cameras?
Cameras, I would say that you're probably in the 250 to 350 range.
And it's a resurfacing, Rob, of the track, it's not the full.
The full, Jack. And just to clarify, just on the bond, is, does that, does this get us to OHS at 100% or no, on the AC? That's not included in the bond, right? You said, no.
No, it's not included in the bond.
So we might need to someday say, okay, or if we wanted to, right, to, and to your point, like, hey, it's 90 degrees here, let's go AC this. So to me, again, if we pass something with track and field, which is a really nice to have, but the AC to me would be more important, we'd have to either find it in the lines or go ask the community for it or raise the taxes more, and that just feels a little bit.
So Jared did that, did those numbers, because Alita asked him to, so repeat them again for everybody, Jared, we'll make sure you get them.
Yeah, so, and we'll, yeah, we'll share these numbers, but, so OHS, as it currently stands, that's with the EPC worked on, is about 31% of the classrooms have air conditioning. AMD will be at 100% when that project is done, right?
A year to, two years from now?
Yeah, you're probably looking at about two years from now.
The 19 classrooms, that's gonna be part of the bond, are those, are those included? So that's not, that isn't.
It's right now.
No, but we still need to include bond, because that's included in the bond.
It's include, anything, anything additional in the bond, right?
It's gonna be, so it's not just the amount that you can set, whatever additional 19.
It, right, because it, there's current, there's, the current status is about 31% of the classrooms have air conditioning.
But then what's the bond?
It's gonna increase, the percentage is gonna increase, yes.
But it's not gonna get us to 100.
But you still have the same number of classrooms today that are in air conditioning, because the new ones in the bond are net new.
Correct.
Right.
So why don't you run through your numbers, and then I have a question.
Yeah, and then, so Park, Park is, when we're done. Yeah, and then, so, Park, Park is, when we're done with the construction work that we're doing at Park right now, we'll be at about thirty-six percent, fifteen out of forty-two. Roosevelt, we spoke about, has wind units in all the instructional classroom spaces. Claremont and Brookside, one of them is eighty-six, the other one is eighty-five percent. And that's after we get through this summer and we finish the work that we're, that we're doing in the EPC. It's gonna start in, in like, two weeks. So, that's, those are the numbers we're having.
Then, thank you for that.
So, related to that, so it sounds like between Park and the high school, there's seventy-eight classrooms that don't have air conditioning. And we just, to do seventy-one unit ventilators across the others, that was about seven point seven million. So, in today's dollars, a ballpark of eight-ish million would probably do air conditioning across Park and the high school. But, I know the high school's got special duct and all that stuff, so...
Yeah.
I'm not holding you to a number, but I'm just saying, let's say, ten million dollars. Like, I think the twenty million's high, but ten million is realistic if we were to basically say, you were trying to do all the buildings.
It's, it's going to be, yeah, between ten, depending on which system's going, it's ten, twelve.
Okay. All right. So, I guess that's one of the questions before us, is do we, when looking at a scope, do you commit to all the fields tonight, or do you commit to site work and leave yourself flexibility for something that comes down the road? And if I'm hearing you right, what you're asking for the board is, tell us if you're committed to basically just the two-ten. Tell us if you're committed to the grass fields, or tell us if you're committed to the, you know, the turf fields at the end of the day. We, you need that from us to know that. And I guess, seeing some of the cost in all this, unless you're, you know, the other things on the table, I'm leaning more towards a flexible approach, which would be, I would support the site work and the, the bond, and then the site work and the budget of the one point three million, and then could make a future decision about, if we wanna spend the money on fields, we spend it on fields. If we wanna spend it, and that would be another secret at that time, because you're turfing those fields at that time. I guess, unless I hear something different from you, with these other variables and balls in the air, that's where would I would be leaning at the moment.
Yeah, but the, the other alternative is to not do zero and do the zero, the point zero, zero, three, eight, and it includes everything. And it's not...
Right, you could do another proposition of going above the zero.
And it's not impacting, it's not limiting your flexibility for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right. Understood. That, but that, that option would result in increasing from the zero, and that would be the point three, five, whether three, eight, yeah. Okay. Gotcha.
So, if we did the point three, eight, we would be tied to that field. That part wouldn't be flexible, because the public is voting on the field.
Yes, correct. It would, though, and again, this is all new, this is why this is such a fluid situation, the air conditioning piece, you'd have to, because you've got the money, as illustrated here, as Alita said repeatedly, you've got money that you need to use out of your capital lines in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, you would have to, let's say it was air conditioning, that would be part of the budget conversation for next year, right?
Just on this... The state was putting that on an expedited schedule and said, okay, school districts, you need to get this done in the next two to three years. You would assume that there would have to be money from the state to do something on that. Not to say it's gonna fully fund it, but typically, they phase things in over a longer period of time.
Well, a couple of things. I doubt that there's any school district, at least from the people I speak to, my colleagues in, in Saratoga, this couple of weeks ago, they have six point nine in their budget for capital.
They don't have it, yeah.
Yeah, they don't. It's, it's, I personally, my experience is that they hear that we can't afford it. And then, like, another school district, like, a poorer school district, how are they gonna come up with these funds? Like, they can't just, you know, vote on this and then tell us to implement it right away. Even the bus conversation is still being discovered, uncovered, because a, an electric bus is four hundred thousand dollars per bus.
And the charging board is a portion.
Yeah, and, and the length of where you're going. And, so, I, I personally, I understand the ability and the desire to be flexible for twenty-five, twenty-six. However, I, I don't see, it, I, I don't see how they're gonna make seven hundred school districts, almost seven hundred school districts, do this without either bonding, additional aid. I, I just don't see how. So, it's, we're fortunate that we have the money available.
It's a fair point.
But, even the five point nine, or whatever's left over, after we do the two point, the two point seven for Brookside and the one point three, that's not enough to finance a whole project for air conditioning. And then, after that year, that money, that six point nine goes to the premium of the bond. So, that's all we have left. We still have to come up with the rest of the money for the, the air conditioning.
The bill that's, that is on the governor's desk right now says September twenty-five, and there is no funding associated with it. And it passed with, like, it well-passed with all kinds of comments, which I found shocking, as have so many of my colleagues today. But, and again, the, many people will resort to what we've done at Roosevelt, buy window units, which are cheaper, but they are worst in terms of efficiency of approaching this.
Efficient way, yeah.
Yes, it is the most inefficient way, a hundred percent. Yes, correct. You could, though, take a look at this from a broader perspective, which we talked, I think Annie mentioned it, that our intention is to increase AC-ing as much as possible. So, regardless of the bill that just got passed, is there an opportunity in your capital line and the budget to increase AC-ing options throughout the district?
So, so, just, just one last thing. I know Melissa wants to ask a question. The, I just wanna be a hundred percent clear, because I thought I was clear and a little confused. The, we, you're proposing, you're saying that if, if we secret the whole thing on AMD, there isn't an option one and an option two. It's just an option one for the community to vote on?
Seeker and the bond resolution are two separate, completely separate things.
Okay, but tonight, we're just saying, secret the whole thing, but when we get to that date where we have to have the bond res, but we still have the option right now until that date in August, or that date in July, sorry, that date in July. That, that's why I'm, I'm getting confused here.
Because the, the challenge that we have is, we have to, as we talked about before, we have to be able to go out to the community and explain the project.
We gotta make a decision tonight.
No, I know, I know we gotta make a decision. I'm just trying to understand what decision we're making in terms of, is it a decision for, that will say, everything on AMD with the fields and everything, but then there won't be an option one and an option two? It's just a full thing?
No, I think they're asking us to decide, are we gonna go out for an option one and two, or are we just gonna go for the two-ten based thing tonight?
Okay, okay.
Right? That's what you're asking us to, to decide there.
It's either one or the other, okay.
Right.
Okay, that's why, I just, I just wanna clarify on that. So, sorry, Melissa, I know you have a question.
I'm just curious, and this might be an obscure question in relation to the context of this conversation as it is right now, but this project, this scope that we're talking about or leaning towards, the church and all of those upgrades, we optimally, the timeline would make that operational by when?
The, the church and the theater, the stamp building will be actually operational by the end of twenty-nine, going into twenty-thirty.
Okay. Can I request that at some point, not in, obviously, right now, whatever paper you're reading off of, we, at some point, had a schedule. This is when we expect this work to be done.
Yes, I did that, and...
And, and then, since then, we've pushed things back, and so, obviously, that timeline's, you know, scrapped. We don't need that one. But, I don't think we've reassessed with this September twenty-fourth date of timeline of what to expect.
No, I did.
Which is not, not something I need today, not, not something we're making a choice about, but it is something I'd just be interested to have at some point.
No, I did do that. That's, that's part of our need. When we're estimating a project, we need to know how it's gonna be built, so that we can basically assess the escalation. So, the first thing we do is look at all the parts and pieces and then schedule them out. So, when, when it moved to the September twenty-fourth date, we used that date, moved forward and created a new schedule based on that. That's what I'm reading.
I guess, I'm just building on Melissa's question. I'm curious about, wait, now, when will Claremont be done? When will Brookside, you know, and it's just that chart.
Sure, and I, I can, I can, I'll send it out, and you can have it.
Yeah.
So, if I can just finish the second part of my question. Given that, I just, I'm curious, being that that seems to be, give or take, a five-year timeline. When we talk about OHS and projected maintenance costs over that timeframe, are we considering any possible maintenance costs when it comes to the church? I know we're renovating, but it seems like most of that is like, just structural renovation. I'm just thinking about things like, are we, is this, does this plan include, because I'm just looking at some of the surprise, I guess, expenses, I'll call it, for some of those older buildings that we already have. So, things like generators and boilers and things like that, are those part of the renovation as well? Or, is that something that will possibly become a maintenance expense when that building is operational?
No, the church will get brand-new systems. So, that'll, all the buildings additions that we're doing, a full mechanical and electrical systems are brand-new or being put in.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, did you have any, I just...
Not at the time, thank you.
Okay. So, just one last time for everyone, anyone on the phone, the board, regarding what's in the two-ten for the new seven, eight building, the fi, the grass play field meets all programmatic needs for seven, eight. They can play kickball, or whatever game is gonna be popular in seven, eight there. You're shaking your head, no, Catherine, so that...
No, that's the one point three million that we would have to fund.
No.
The, the seven, eight, what's in the two-ten is this piece here.
Does that meet programmatic recess and/or PE needs, as is?
Yes, yes.
It does?
PE needs, recess needs, not interscholastic sports needs.
Right, right. That's what I was getting at. So, I just wanna make sure that this here, so everyone knows, will, the, the kids will have ample space to do PE recess, whatever kids in seventh, eighth grade do, and whatever new games might be invented on a grass field when this is done.
Correct.
You've mapped, because, because just looking at it, it looks like, you know, again, rendering, it looks like, you know, a thin strip.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long, narrow space, but if you look next to it, you could see the space that you're comparing on the, the AMD campus.
Right.
Which is going to be larger than what you're currently using on the AMD, not including going down towards the lower field.
Okay, so this will actually be larger for programmatic needs than we have at AMD right now, ignoring all the other fields that you see there. Okay, great. And then, any subsequent addition to that, like the one point three we're talking about, that gets us also some additional space for kids to play with, or that's just the work that would potentially tee up the other thing down the road if we decide not to go with that bond proposal?
The one point three gets you the clearing, earthwork, grass, and topsoil and grass.
Can I play on it? Can a team play a baseball game in it?
Yes, it'll be greater, yes.
Because I remember sitting there with baseball. Okay, so that would be...
It'll be just grass. It's not going to be...
You got the stripe that do it just...
Right.
Understood. So, the two-ten gets us PE recess, no interscholastic baseball game. One-three, if we do it as part of the, we're laid out in the budget, down the road, gets you baseball field, interscholastic, and then, right, in theory, more play space for programmatic needs, correct? Like, that. And then, the next step is, yes, the tennis courts, and then you would turf it over. And then, there's nothing, we can do that in the future. There's no, there's no rush to future-proof us that now, meaning, we do the two-ten, we could always do the one-three if we choose as a board with the money. We could always do that turf. There's nothing that's gonna say, oh, well, if you don't do it now, you're never gonna be able to do blank, correct?
That would be correct. You could do it at a later time.
It's gonna cost more.
It's gonna cost, yes, things go up more, right. Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Just a quick clarification. I'm pretty sure it's softball, not baseball, that could be played on that field. It's a scholastically, but they'd be both at different size.
I think to encapsulate my thoughts on this, I thanks everyone for all of your hard work and for letting us pepper you with questions. I feel solid in the decision that I've come to, and that's because of your dedication and hard work, especially yours, Alita. I'm good with the zero percent two-ten. I don't think I'm comfortable with putting out an, a proposition of a point three eight, given the fact that I may have some regrets of spending the money in that way, and I'd prefer to have flexibility and go with the zero for now. That's really where my gut is and where I feel comfortable. That's my position.
Just to reclarify, as we spend a lot of time talking about the high school changes there, Brookside, just recapping, everyone copacetic with that, I'll use that term. Like, there, we spent a lot of time talking about a, a small section of this project, but it was a ton of work done by the team in all these other areas to reduce the scope. So, I just wanna make sure everyone is clear with those areas, everybody. Okay.
Catherine, what you just said, does that include the scope for the grading and stuff, and then we have the flexibility?
It includes whatever the zero percent and the two-ten includes. So, if, if we wanted to do, I think, a playable field with striping and all of that, that would have to come out of our budget.
The clearing, the clearing and the turning, that rest of that field in the grass would be added into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Okay, but we'll set it aside tonight if we want...
The one point three, tonight, the two-ten just covers the area that we need for drainage and you need for recess.
And we put a fence, and there'd be woods in back of it.
And we'd have to do a secret again for the, for that balance that we were planning on clearing. So, if we didn't do that option, then later on, we would have to do another secret for that midsection and the bigger section.
Every time I think I've got it, I get like, confused all over again. Okay, so, I guess I'll just share my thoughts, and somebody can tell me what I'm saying. I'm comfortable, I'm not comfortable with the point three eight percent and asking the community for eight million dollars for a field. I am comfortable with, if we need the scope of the, if we need the scope to include the AMD site work, earth ground and field work, but we don't have to use that one point three for that when we get there, that's what I like. Zero percent and okay with that scope, but with flexibility.
The one point three would be later. It's not part of this. It's later on.
Right, but do we need to, for the secret process, do we need to, I thought we needed to discuss, like, what scope we wanted.
And that's, that's really that, up to that little strip that's, that you see there. That's, that's what, either it's that, or it's the rest of it.
So, in terms of seeker, we're, we're just declaring lead agency. In the seeker scope, there's an, what we're sending out to the other potential interested agencies is an environmental assessment of the work we're doing, in that we're covering the field work, because we didn't know what was gonna happen tonight. So, whether you say yes or no to it later, it doesn't matter. We're covered. However, if you decide to do the, the project two years from now, SED and state law requires a secret to be done on that project. Just to, to kind of ease your mind about seeker, we just did one on the driveway here. We did it on Brookside. Every project that the board approves has a seeker process. It's the same. It's just, this project's bigger than an addition.
Okay. In conclusion, I'm a no to point three eight. I think we're on the same page.
And just one last clarification. There's no, Mary, there, there haven't, parents, athletic coaches coming, oh my God, we really need tennis courts. We really, really need a softball place, right, from a, from a, from a programmatic athletic standpoint, just to, just to put it on the record, like, there's no deficiencies right now with any facilities left. We understand the tennis has to go off-site. But, aside from that, there's nothing that'll say, oh my God, we can't play softball. You have to go forty miles this way, that way, like, are, are there any of those concerns? We haven't heard that.
I will, well, I defer to those who've been on the facilities committee before I was here, because this came up for many conversations, and we can turn to Jared for information, too.
Just to hear that.
So, so, girls' softball also plays off-site. They play, they play at a town or village facility. So, and of course, as, as you put it out, we have no tennis courts.
So, tennis has gotta go off-site. It's a sport, right, we have? So, they gotta go off-site. Girls' softball's gotta go off-side. I, I mean, have, how would you grade the, like, the urgency or the complaints or the...
I can't speak to that, because I don't run athletics.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Doesn't sound like we, like, I don't... I mean, have, how would you grade the, like, the urgency or the complaints or the?
I can't speak to that because I don't run athletics.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Doesn't sound like we, like, I don't, the board hasn't gotten anything on this. Like, please build us a field right now in the next three to five years, please build tennis courts. Like, it's nice to have, it would help with efficiency and moving people around. But just to clarify, like, before we say no, and I'm not really changing my opinion, it's just, I just wanted to hear, my, want to hear whether or not there's like, oh my God, you have to do this, otherwise, blank, and I don't hear the blank, so my opinion hasn't changed.
You know, I'll chime in just from student reports in the past and others, right? So there's been requests from the tennis team, from the girls tennis team, to come back on campus because of situations that have happened at the off-site facilities that really don't fall under our purview at the end of the day. Okay, so there's, there's, I think, if you ask some in the community, they're going to say, why are we going off into this public space when we should be, you know, be on school grounds in a controlled area? And I think when you look at it, and there's some that look at it and say, baseball, we have a wonderful grass field, and it's well-maintained, and the girls softball is off on the other side of town on a field that may not be of the same park. And so I think as you look at those things, there's going to be people with different lenses, and when you're looking at the possibility of having these fields and keeping students closer to them under conditions that we can basically monitor and manage, and you can do that across the board, it's a worthwhile thing to look at. And I, that's why I think, you know, I sit in this spot of, I think this makes sense to do the site work at the same, the same way that we build buildings where we can stack on top of them at the end of the day. Whereas, you know, if I was making the decision today, I would say, do the 0%, the 210, and basically, we'll look at the budget next year for the 1.3, and that'll give a future board the ability to decide, hey, the state gave a ton of money for air conditioning, we don't have to pay, we can put it into facility, we can put it into this. That's my sensibility about the, how I would approach this. I think if you don't do the site work, it makes it very hard for the future to basically, you know, build off the momentum of the, of the program that you're putting together. But that's just my sensibilities.
And Frank, I'm going to add also, I think what we heard in, in, you know, and I know it was an alternate last year, but just even in the conversations I was, for the alternate facilities, was, it was a gender equity issue from the perspective, yeah, there was a boys' baseball, there was, there was, you know, and of course, they had to go off-site. Now, granted, I know it's, there's some, some that'll say, hey, it's only part of a year, but, you know, some of the issues were that the girls, that when they were going into tennis courts, that were into more of the public fields, that there would be a level of, you know, harassment of, because, you know, and it was not, and they want, the idea was not, so they can feel safe in a place where they would have those fields. That was, that was what was a key point that was brought to our attention at the time. So I think to have the flexibility to be able to clear the fields, to lay that, I think that's probably, that makes sense to me. And then later on, you know, whatever a future board decides to do to add in the turf and tennis, you know, that's, that's, we'll leave that to a future board. That's, I don't know if that helped any.
Right, but that 1.3 is still another day. Right, that's another day and another time that we can talk about next year.
Right, right, and again, you know, what do you want to communicate to the community as part of this overall project? Because we have, you know, part of the Brookside kitchen renovation, which is utilizing the same line, and we're going to tell folks that that's part of this plan itself, too.
And you have to carry the library line, because they will inevitably want to use at least some of that money to do work. So you have things that you have to carry. So I guess from my seat, I feel comfortable tonight saying, go to the 210 and say, we intend to basically do the 1.3 next year to clear the fields and, you know, have that ability for the future. That's just my individual place on this one. And I don't know if that impacts the SECR or not as the scope of the work, but certainly in the communication plan, that's more of where I would say, like, yeah, we're going to grass those fields over and clear the land.
I'm in agreement.
And SECR, and if we did it that way, we'd have to SECR again when we do the 1.3.
Sounds like, it sounds like we would next year.
Yeah, yeah, next year.
Again, this isn't, and this is off in the corner of the property and all of that stuff, far away from others. So of course, they would do the SECR and we'd follow the time line.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like it's like such a massive undertaking for that, right? So, okay, I'm, I'm clear.
I'm sorry, can I just jump in? We do also need to articulate that we are planning to use 2.7 for next year for Brookside. So just as we are intending to use the 1.3, we're also using the 2.7, 2.7.
Why, why would we, I mean, I understand, I understand, Frank, your point, but then we're committing ourselves, right? Then we're going, I reckon, say, okay, this is what the bond is. By, by the way, next year, we're going to use 1.3 and the 2.7, we're locking ourselves into that. They seem like worthy projects, but again, what if something else pops up?
Well, the intent was that we move these projects out to get to 0.
Right.
No, I get that, I'm just saying that why do we need, as part of the PR campaign, why can't we just say 210, and that's it? Why do we have to say, and then next year, we'll do the 1.3 and the 2.7? We don't have to, right? So I, yeah, so my point is, like, I get, they probably will be things we'll want, probably, well, we don't know a year from now what could come up.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, if you're going to say 1.3, that's what I heard, then you need to say 2.7 as well. If you don't want to say anything, then don't say anything.
That's, that's my point, I personally don't think we should say anything unless we get asked. Like, yeah, maybe we'll, thank you, just like anyone, someone might say, hey, we build blank. Oh, okay, we'll take it under advisement. I agree, they're worthy, just by, if we go on record and package those things up with this, saying 210, and by the way, next year, we're going to do this other stuff, now we're on record, and what if something else comes up? We can't, or something else we deem as more important.
The one point about the Brookside cafeteria, that's a must-have, that is absolutely essential. The server is too small, kids are lining up in hallways, it, it, it's what prompted the whole. So we're funding the Claremont cafeteria, I'm thinking about the optics and messaging. We're funding the Claremont cafeteria through the bond. People would turn around and say, well, what are you doing about Brookside? Where is that? So if you highlight it, you asterisk it, or whatever you need to do, we run it past legal and bond council as to what we do, just to identify it to folks that we haven't forgotten about that. We know that's, that's an essential piece to that. But again, to your point, then, when you do that, you know, if you're going to add the 1.3 for the grass field, you should do the same, just to communicate that, that that's your intention.
The intention, yeah.
Are you, from my standpoint, considering that every year, we ask the facilities people to come back with a plan of what we're going to spend the money on, and typically, we move forward with those initiatives? I think that we're kind of spending time on it, I understand the point, we're not committed to it. But from my standpoint, yes, I would intend, if I'm sitting here next year doing this, that we need to deal with the Brookside cafeteria and clear the field, barring anything tremendously different.
I'm comfortable with the 210 and no increase to the bond with the, you know, with, with the ability to open up for what we need to do for Brookside. Because I, you know, again, the intent here, I mean, we can sit here and go with money back and forth, but kids not eating is, is a problem, so.
I'll just add my voice to the chorus. I'm on board with a 0% 210, and then preserving the right for some flexibility down the road.
For the 1.3 and the 210 of-
The 1.3, yeah.
Yes.
And just to be formal, informal, yes, I am on board with 0% 210 as well. I think while we don't have to commit to what we intend to do with the flexibility, I think it is responsible to at least say, these are some of the top priorities that we would consider. So I think having that flexibility to even entertain that conversation is a key component of this. So I am on board as well.
I would say you certainly have done a lot of your work for next year's budget development, talking about some two very significant items. Right.
I'm sure we can figure out a way how to have some very lengthy meetings.
Okay, so we have, we're July 24th or 25th?
Oh, yes, what date do, do we prefer to do the extra board meeting? Which will hopefully be brief, right?
Right, we have, you have on, although you have, you have not adopted your schedule for next year yet. That's part of the reorg meeting. The plan for next year has a regular board meeting on Wednesday night, July 24th.
Right, and we have our tentative date for the retreat as the 25th.
Correct.
As the 25th, yeah, so.
And the last day, we can prove this is the 25th? That's what you're saying, or is that, I just, I would give the days cushion. If the 25th is the deadline, I'd do the meeting on the 24th. I mean, that's really where I would go with this.
Right, well, you have, as long as you're, I'm asking you to pre-approve your board meeting for July 24th. It's a Wednesday night, we're okay with that?
Yeah, I vote the 24th, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the resolution to declare lead agency is on the agenda.
It's 4.1.
Yes, so it's there, that's there. Okay, so did we get all our homework done, Alita? Did I leave something out?
The only thing I would say is that the SECR process, we're remaining true to that, and nothing is preempting that. As our bond council wanted us to be sure to communicate to the community that we are undergoing the full SECR process, and we're not making any assumptions. And in fact, we're not voting on anything related to a proposition until the SECR is finally done. We just are trying to communicate to the community what we intend the scope to be, but everything still is dependent upon SECR being finalized.
So the bond project scope is the 210 with the orange fence and back of the rec fields, and the board reserves the decision to make about anything else next spring?
Yay, team! All right, thank you, everyone. I feel like I can go home and sleep for a year right now.
Yeah, but that was a great conversation.
Yeah, I'm sure all of you do as well. So thanks to the board, thanks to Alita, thanks to Superintendent Mary Fox Alter, thanks to Superintendent Sanchez, thank you to our Facilities Advisory Committee and the community members who've been involved along the way. Thank you to past trustees who have worked on the ramp leading up to all of this. I am, at this time, going to turn this over to public comment, sorry, oh.
I would make a motion that we move up to 4.1 on the agenda.
I was going to ask for public comment first, because it's on the agenda item, and then, and then go from there, is that all right? Okay, we don't have anyone in the audience who is here to speak in person, but I'll turn public comment virtually over and ask if there's anyone willing to, or who would like to make a comment on the agenda item in two days. Sorry, I'm tired. In tonight's agenda, they can raise their digital hand, virtual hand. Okay, no virtual hands being raised, I will now take a motion for 4.1.
So moved.
Second. 4.1, Resolution Regarding Intention to Serve as SECR Lead Agency Bond for Capital Work at Claremont Elementary School, Ann M. Dorner Middle School, and Austing High School Campus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Oh, and you told me I would be running for Board of Ed, I never thought it would be this much work. Okay, is there anything from the rest of Section 4 that folks would like me to break out? I will take a motion for 4.3 through 4.10. So moved, second. 4.3, Resolution to Appoint a Consultant for the 2024-2025 School Year. 4.4, Resolution to Affirm the Results of the Annual District Budget Vote and Board of Education Elections Held on May 21st, 2024. 4.5, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of April 23rd, 2024. 4.6, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting of May 1st, 2024. 4.7, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting Statutory Budget Hearing on May 7th, 2024. 4.8, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting of May 14th, 2024. 4.9, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special District Meeting Held on May 21st, 2024. 4.10, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of May 29th, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Congratulations to everyone on passing of the budget. I will take a motion for 5.1. So moved, second. 5.1, Motion to Accept Recommended Placements of Special Education Students. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. I'll take a motion for 6.1 through 6.6.
So moved.
Second. 6.1, Resolution Regarding Acceptance of Funds, AP Examination. 6.2, Resolution Regarding Award of Bid. 2024-2025 Elevator Maintenance and Service. 6.3, Resolution Regarding Acceptance of Donation of 3D Printing Equipment from the Robotics Company, OHS Engineering Club. 6.4, Resolution Regarding Renewal of Food Management Service Contract for 2024-2025. 6.5, Resolution Regarding Acceptance of Funds, Refund of Field Trip Transportation Costs. 6.6, Resolution Regarding Inner Fund Transfers. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a quick question, since we have engineering that's on here. And this is a question for Alita, did we receive any funds from West Trestor Community Foundation, Austin Engineering Fund, to the amount of $3,500 that you're aware of? And if, can you have a look into it?
I have to look it up.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. I will take a motion for 7.3 through 7.16. So moved.
Second.
7.3, Resolution Regarding Rescinding Support Staff Appointments. 7.4, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Resignation. 7.5, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Resignation. 7.6, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Resignation. 7.7, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments. 7.8, Resolution Regarding Bus Attendant Appointments. 7.9, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.10, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.11, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointment, Summer School Programs. 7.12, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointment, Summer School Programs. 7.13, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointment, Summer School Programs. 7.14, Resolution Regarding Approval of School Volunteers. 7.15, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Request for Leave of Absence. 7.16, Resolution Regarding APPR Accountability. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. We now have our second section of the evening for public comment. There's no one here in person to speak publicly. I'd invite our virtual audience to raise their digital hand and provide commentary. No digital hands raised. We're now going to continue on to board discussion and information. Quick housekeeping item, we are having difficulty getting into super eval to complete our Step 4 of the self-evaluation that we've worked on for this year. We are coming up on needing to start the evaluation for upcoming year so that we can set some board goals at our retreat. You should be able to access the Phase 1 of the board eval for this upcoming year. Is there an appetite to go forward and start doing that while we work out the kinks and for whatever reason why other board members other than me can't access Stage 4 of the current board eval? Say that again, are you asking us if we want to basically just start all over for next year? Or try to get Step 4 up and running? So Step 4 is essentially, how did we do on the goals that we set out for ourselves this year? Which is like our board handbook, developing communications processes, setting, I think, setting norms, a couple of things like that. We can't answer those questions with a final exclamation point at this point, because people don't have access, and Elie's trying to figure out why. But what we can do is we can start the upcoming year's evaluation with the Phase 1. They're, they're not necessarily mutually exclusive, but I want to take the pulse on the board.
I mean, typically, you look at last year's, I look at last year's evaluation before, basically, you know, as part of the process to do the new evaluation. So I would say, from my lens, let's resolve it so we can get into last year's eval, so that we can do next year's.
But we're going to have to try to do both back-to-back then, right?
Can we just call super eval and find out what the issue is, so that we make sure we all have access to it? We're all supposed to get access.
She's a call-in to them. I don't know how long it's going to take, and I know that we don't have, I think we just have our reorg meeting between tonight and our retreat. And I know that there was a concern that we started the- And I know that there was a concern that we started the evaluation a little bit later than we ideally wanted to this year. I think we started it, what, in October, maybe?
Yeah.
So, listen, if everyone's comfortable trying to get this resolved, and then we'll, and everyone's okay being in a position where we don't start the new one until August timeframe, that's fine. But I think that's what we're ideally probably looking towards unless we can get it resolved very quickly.
Well, are there other options where you could go in and save the valuation to a PDF and that could be distributed to the board? I mean, like, is there another way we can get that information out even if the board can't log into it?
Yeah, everyone can go in and look at it now, right? Everyone can go in, they can write down what their responses would be, and they can email the rest of the board. It doesn't have to necessarily be within that program, but you can see the options.
For last year's eval, you can see last year's eval.
You can see everything, yes. So, if that's what we want to do, that's a great idea. Can everyone commit to within the next week going on there and then emailing the rest of the trustees, I guess, your final assessment evaluation?
And then it gets just copied and pasted into whatever, right?
I mean, you can literally write, like, goal one, I give us effective. Here's my comment, or I don't have a comment, or goal two, I give us.
Oh, you're saying do it not in the eval tool?
Not in the eval tool.
Just do it manually.
I think that kind of erodes the point of using the eval tool. I think, I suspect, one of the problems might be because there is a date, a do by date on that step four right there, and I think it's locked because of that. I think it said finish by 6:1.
Mine says 6:14, though.
Yeah, so I don't, so I think that, yeah, that's, you know, probably why you were able to get into it because your date was, I see 6:1.
Oh, okay.
So I think that date is locked. I think it were locked out because the date gave a, I don't know where that date came from, but it was there. And so I'm just putting that out there as a troubleshooting frame of reference as we figure out what happened.
All right, so you tell me, I don't, I don't.
I personally would feel comfortable if we're able to rectify the situation and use the tool as it was intended. That's my take.
And then, when do you want to do the step one to restart the process for the upcoming year? Do we kind of want to do both back to back and try to have both of those done before?
We can try, I mean, it's worth a try. Everyone, it's going to be up to everyone's ability to do that, but it's worth a try.
I was going to say, do we want like a deadline for this issue to be resolved? And then we just go to emailing?
At this point, I feel like it's going to be resolved when it's resolved. And when Ellie says it's working, get in there and let it.
No, I mean, for us, like, we're like, okay, if it's not ready by June 20th, then we just email each other for the sake of this being done.
I'm more comfortable not to. If we're going to use the tool, I'm comfortable using the tool. And I wouldn't be concerned about doing stuff in email if that's the process we're getting away from. So, I guess I'm, you know, you guys can decide what you want to do from a consensus standpoint, but until I can get access in the tool, I'm not comfortable doing it outside the tool.
What if there was a way to do it on paper and then you just bring it with you to the retreat? Would that be something you'd be more comfortable?
How much are we paying for this tool?
I know. But like, assuming we, just, you know, for the moment, that it takes so long to figure it out and that it's so impossible to do, we can then evaluate if we want to use it in the future. But for now, would that be something like, just, because we don't have another meeting to decide this. So we kind of need to have like an if then. If it gets resolved and it works, then obviously we can use it. But if it doesn't, and I'm hearing you, and I understand totally your concern about communicating it via email, if we had like a printed PDF where we literally fill it out on a piece of paper and then just literally bring it with us to the retreat to discuss it?
I know the systems have its problems and what have you, but I mean, I think our board retreat is intended to kind of have for us to kind of like look at where we are, where to set our board goals. I mean, if we have to do a workaround, so be it, you know, but it stinks that our systems aren't working very well, but it's a question that we have to, we have to try to resolve in parallel. That's just my opinion.
All right, here's, I guess, the question that I need. At all costs, do we as a board want to have our new eval step one done before our retreat on the 25th?
Yes.
Step one is what, set, throwing goals for next year?
The board, here, I got pulled up. Step one is the board's self-evaluation. And right now, what's locked up is monitor progress on objectives and determine results.
So, step one is where each individual trustee goes in and answers the rubric questions with their thoughts on, I don't remember the categories off the top of my head, but we did them last October. I think there was communication, there was budgeting, there was, you know, something about community, working with admin, I think. And we each go along and answer those questions and give our thoughts. So my question to the board now is, irrespective of what happens with finishing this year's and that technology, do we prioritize getting step one done before our retreat? What are people's thoughts?
I want to do step one before the retreat, but I also want to do step four before we do step one. So I would like a written down option if email is not comfortable, and I totally understand why, and bring that, and then also have step one done.
I think. Go ahead.
Where is it, you could say create PDF and print out a PDF and like hand circle or hand write.
Yeah, that's fine with me personally.
So for context, when we say before the retreat, we're talking about over a month before our scheduled date, right? And I, if we are unable to rectify a software problem with, and I'm not saying like from Ellie's standpoint, but like from the software, the vendor's perspective, I think that's problematic going forward just as a, as us attending to use that. So I guess I'm saying that to say I think that's a really, it's a possible but not probable scenario that in a month and a half, we won't have that fixed and won't be able to fit, you know, finish out this in the way it was intended. But I get having a contingency plan, but I'd be, you know, really disappointed if a month and a half, we weren't.
I'm calling them, I'm calling them.
I'm using it in other school boards without an issue. So if we can't get it right, what's, what's the point?
I'm going to say that.
Then let's just get rid of the.
Okay, so I'm going to diary a check-in on this issue in 10 days. All right, I will let you know where we're at. It sounds, though, that like we really do want to be having a productive discussion on the 25th, having everyone looked at and filled out the step one. I'll do my best to get us there.
I think generally speaking, it's just a matter of comfort. If we can't do it, just come prepared for a discussion, right? At the very least, how people intend to make sure they're able to do that is, I think we should be leaving it up to them. But hopefully, it won't come to that.
One can hope. All right, well, we were just here last week. Have there been any other, any committee meetings or anything in the last week?
Did we meet?
We did, on Thursday.
We met the board governance committee.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But this is what we discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, it sounded like, I feel like I was at a meeting, but we just discussed all of that.
And then we also came up with a kind of a checklist, or a starting point at least, for a checklist for tasks that we would like a self-governance committee to be on top of and kind of mapped that out for the year, which was emailed to everybody and shared in a folder so that everyone can reference that. And came up with some discussion topics or prioritizations for things to do with the retreat, so.
And I saw that email. If there are folks who have other ideas for the retreat, please send them along. I did confirm with Ellie today that P&amp;W Bosse's is available for our retreat at no cost to us. So unless there's a strong objection, that seems like a good place as any to do it. We've had our retreat there in the past. And I prefer maybe a little change of pace, other than 400 except, no offense to anyone in 400 except.
I think we also discussed, I think it was Rob brought up the issue of not always knowing when meetings are. Because I definitely missed a meeting this week because I didn't get an invite for it.
Okay.
I couldn't have attended anyways, it was a big deal. But, yeah, we talked about that calendar of like all the meetings.
I think that's also a great discussion for us to put in a process at the retreat to make sure that we stay, all stay on top of that. I will add that to the list. Okay, so I think according to our board handbook, which has not yet been finalized, although I am going to give us high marks on that for our self-eval and our checklist number four because we've all worked very hard on it. But this is our last regular meeting before our reorg meeting, which is July 10th. And according to our new outline in the handbook, it's recommended that if anyone is interested in board leadership for the next school year, that they can make that known at this meeting. They do not have to, there is nothing preventing anyone from running from the floor on the 10th, but those elections will be on July 10th. After two years in serving as board president, I am not interested in the role of board president for next year. I do think I'm interested in staying on as vice president. There are several initiatives that I feel like are close to really being finalized and solidified that I'd really like to see through to the end. That's where my head is at right now.
That was so off the cuff. I wrote something to say.
Oh. Go for it.
You'll forgive me for the more formal nature of my little statement right here. Okay. So, and this is, we had emailed last year, so I basically just, this is that email from last year. "Colleagues, I would like to take this opportunity to humbly ask that you consider me for a position in board leadership again next year, specifically in the role of president. Over the course of my tenure on the board, I have faithfully attended and meaningfully participated in all board and committee meetings. I have leveraged my background in education to learn and grow quickly as I regularly participate in education-related in-service opportunities both as a board member and a teacher. I have advocated for best board practice by advocating for the establishment of regular board self-evaluations and the establishment of a board self-governance committee to help ensure we meet all of our governance responsibilities. I have shown up as often as possible as a representative of the board to many community school events, including but not limited to new teacher orientations, most student of distinction events, press conferences, art shows, music performances, and more. Perhaps more important than my dedicated presence and commitment to professional growth, I possess the personal qualities essential for board leadership. I approach every decision with an unbiased and open-minded attitude and am always willing to adapt my position when new information is presented. I'm a clear, thoughtful, timely, and consistent communicator. Furthermore, I'm committed to ensuring an inclusive environment that fosters fair contributions from all and consensus whenever possible. I hope that I have proven to you over the course of this year as vice president that I'm prepared to take on the responsibility of president. Thank you humbly for your consideration."
Thank you.
So I just have a question about procedures. So you both sort of declared your interest. How do we discuss, like, if other board members have questions and say, okay, that's great, what do you feel about this? What do you feel about that? Does that happen now? Does that happen offline? Does that happen at the reorg meeting prior to a vote? Like, how do we, you know, throw questions to you as, you know, pertains to the potential role?
I don't think there is a formal process. There's certainly not one that we've outlined in the board handbook. I welcome a phone call or a chat with anyone. I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
Last year, we got emails and then just spoke to you individually, right?
Yeah.
Thanks for wanting to do it.
Okay, do we have any other board dialogue of any reason?
Yeah, so speaking of meetings, I know at the next meeting, we have to approve the calendar, right, for the rest of the, started with July 10th all the way through to 2025.
Meetings.
The meeting.
The board, wait, the board calendar or the whole district calendar?
The board calendar. So, first question is, if we approve it as is, is it locked? We can't change anything, like, and so here's, I wanted to throw this out to other board members. We've had this Saturday budget workshop for, I guess, I don't know how long it's been. It's on the calendar. If we feel, you know what, we don't need it. We can do it in one or the other many meetings around that time. If we approve it next, on the, on the next board meeting, we have, can we do that? Can we knock it out? Or if it's there, we have to have it. So that's one. The other is around the timing, you know, and I understand we all have other commitments, work commitments. You know, there are other boards that, for instance, start their meetings 6:00, 6:30, 7:00. I mean, we do go late, we do the hard work, but, you know, to me, I would love to get us out earlier because sometimes I personally had an issue the next day, like waking up, like, you know, when we're here 11:30 at night. So, the question is, if we approve as is, are we locked and can't make any changes? And then, if that's the case, just wanted to throw out to other board members, and if we don't want to do it now because it is 11:16, are we able to have discussions prior to the approval of the calendar, the next meeting around this? If you guys feel that, you know, yeah, I'm not, we're good at it, or yeah, maybe we don't need the budget meeting. Maybe we don't, you know, maybe someone will entertain the idea, okay, maybe we try to start at 7:00 or something like that, so, two-part question.
I don't think we're locked in to, I think we can always make changes. You'll correct me if I'm wrong with that. In the past, we have done a combination of budget Saturdays or some evening sessions of portions of the budget. So that's always an option. I know that over the years, we have discussed, and maybe even at one, I can't remember if it was when I was on the board or not. I'm sure Frank, you'll be able to tell us. But I know that at one point in time, we may have started it at 7:00 briefly. There is consideration to that. I also know that we've discussed this issue at a retreat. I think it is a good discussion for a retreat, certainly permissible for a retreat. So, I don't, I guess to answer your question, there's nothing that means that we have to discuss it exhaustively before the reorg meeting where we approve the schedule of meetings. And we can discuss that kind of thing at a retreat if we want to change the times especially. And if we wanted to change, if we wanted to give consideration to how we did budget Saturday. I know that there are districts who do it very differently. I know Croton, I think, did away with their budget Saturday entirely. I'd be opening, I'd be open to hearing from our superintendent on the issue.
Hey, we can find out in Alita what other districts do from business officials or superintendents. We did budget Saturdays, but did away with them when I was in Pleasantville, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the history of the Saturday came from the line-by-line review. If the board doesn't want to do a line-by-line review, then you don't need a full day. And a lot of districts don't do a line-by-line review. But if you're going to do a line-by-line, you're probably going to.
Need the time.
Need the time.
We can put it in a calendar now and then decide at a retreat when we discuss that kind of thing, that, to scrap it. We can scrap things.
Or, or the inverse, like, we don't put it in and say, okay, we want, right?
We add meetings all the time, yeah.
Okay, no, I, no, that I know. I'm saying, so if we approve this piece of, you know, what you sent out, Mary, as is, we can always change this, the time, and/or cut out a meeting with no, you know.
Your prerogative as a board.
You can do that at any time. You could do that anytime, okay.
Just as long as you follow the proper notices, which, you know, according to the, however, yeah, state law, however many hours before the meeting.
Okay, well, maybe, but yes, we can maybe discuss it, you know, I guess we can think about it now and either vote or not vote as is, but then bring it up in retreat and then, okay, how do people feel and change accordingly with the notice.
I will punt this a bit and say that I'm definitely interested, between our superintendent and our business official and the rest of our cabinet, are you finding the line-by-line beneficial? Don't ask their answer tonight, but are you finding it beneficial? Is there a different way that ideally you would recommend it be structured for the board to consider?
Just some of the. Alita and I will talk and give you options and thoughts.
I just don't feel like I can adequately opine.
I think part of what you have to consider with that, it's really probably the community more than, I mean, like, yes, they would probably love to consolidate things down, but the question becomes is, how much do you know, you're going to get questions, you're going to do it, and it's trying to find that right balance.
I would say globally, it's not a matter of what we would like to refer, it's really what you believe in terms of your roles as board members. Well, what is your, well, what do you see as a vehicle that helps implement your fiduciary responsibility? That's really what the big question is.
And that you feel comfortable with going before the community, that you're being transparent, and that you're basically reviewing things.
We'll provide you different options. We'll provide you different options that other people use so you can look at.
In the context of having the flexibility of deciding whether or not we feel it's possible, I think that's a valid point. But I'm thinking in the context of these extensive financial conversations we've been having at board meetings over the past just two years alone, I think that element of the process is, is, is a responsible, necessary component in the context of just how extensive our financial projections and dreams and decisions have been over the past two years. I think that is a good element to have in terms of transparency because it would just leave a lot of questions on the table, which will come up in some context in a board meeting anyway, and ironically make those meetings longer. So I think if anything, that gives us back some time, even though it's hard to believe. But I think in the context of just how extensive our inquiries are, understandably, given the amount of money that we're talking about, or in even projecting, I think at this point in time, my opinion is that that is a good element to have. We could talk about, I think we've done well to kind of structure it differently and be more efficient. I think this year particularly, we kind of structured it a bit differently. So tweaking it and things like that, I think are conversations to entertain as well. But I think that part of the process is really integral in terms of financial transparency.
I agree. I like going line-by-line and I feel like this year we were expected to go line-by-line before the meeting and then come with questions. And a lot of my questions were answered during it, but I just appreciated all that context. Sorry, I know it's long.
No, it's fine. I think this is why, you know, I think this is why, like, give us a few different models of how you've seen it done and we can discuss it and go from there.
Are we done with this topic?
Uh, do you want us to be done with this topic?
I want to go to sleep.
Okay. Do you have something to say?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll just add to Ann, and I know it's a long day and we, we all have different interests and things. We feel important and we're tired and it's late. I just want to add that we are going to have another policy committee meeting before the end of the year, or before the reorg, I should say. We had to reschedule. So just in the context of the, the, the board handbook and in some of the things that the policy committee was committed to do for that, hopefully we'll be able to get a little closer to the, at least that part of the finalization of the handbook. So just giving people an update in the context of our handbook being, you know, a draft form still.
Melissa, I have next Thursday as the date, the twentieth, is that? Okay.
Um, I did want to ask the policy committee, the changes that we made to the, for lack of a proper term, the public comment series of policies, is that on the agenda for you guys? Because I feel like that's-
We haven't met, it got-
There hasn't been a meeting for, I think we have a meeting coming up, another-
The last week, all we did was a handbook.
That should be like up for a second read very soon, right? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
And it shouldn't, it doesn't, it's not going back to policy committee, right?
No.
No? Okay, Illy says no. All right, I just popped into my head. Okay, anything else? All right, I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a matter of personnel, collective bargaining, and contracts, legal contracts.